Okay, so it's seven o'clock. Counsel, are you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. So I want to welcome everyone to the November 19th regular village council meeting. And Judy, if you could do the roll call, please?
Yeah, Hausch.
Yes.
McQueen.
Here.
Hemfling.
Here.
Stokes.
Here.
Krieger.
Here.
Also present are village manager Patty Bates, solicitor Chris Conard, and finance director Colleen Harris.
Okay, great. So we're going to start off with announcements. I know several council members have some. Lisa, do you want to kick them off?
Sure, I would like to make an announcement about Yellow Springs Giving Tuesday. Giving Tuesday is actually a national event to help with nonprofits. Here in Yellow Springs, two dozen nonprofits have come together to coordinate a local Giving Tuesday campaign. And it's held annually on the Tuesday after Thanksgiving. So that's November 27th. And the idea is to kick off the holiday season by rather than just shopping in the mall, or things that'll end up in a landfill, to give money instead to your favorite local nonprofit. The Yellow Springs Community Foundation has coordinated a really lovely website that is Y.S., as in Yellow Springs, YSGivingTuesday.org. And on that website, when you go there, you'll see the logos for the different participating nonprofits. And then you just click on that logo. It will take you right into that site for you to donate. And I suppose I can show a little bit of bias to say that amongst the many wonderful nonprofit logos, you will see one for the Yellow Springs Utility Roundup. And if you've been tracking our activities, you know that the Yellow Springs Utility Roundup is a new program that the village has to round up your utility payment to the nearest dollar, or in the case of Giving Tuesday, consider donating a little bit more to help community members who are at risk of losing their utility service. So don't forget about the Yellow Springs Utility Roundup in addition to the other great nonprofits on Giving Tuesday. Thanks.
All right, thanks Lisa. Mary Ann, did you?
Yeah, well, I'd like to thank the village crew for the work that they had to do during our ice storm to keep us safe, to keep our roads safe, to keep the electricity on. I'm glad I didn't have to be out there.
It was a very, very long couple of days for them, but they did a great job.
Yeah, and I do want to extend off of that just to say that, you know, one of the things that we're really fortunate to have as a village are our own utilities, which means that we have a crew that's going to come out and fix things right away. Unlike if we were relying on a private, we might not get that kind of priority. And I want to say related to that, I think it's really important, and I see this on Facebook now, that we respect the great work and support that our crew does for the village. And I hope that we remember that, you know, while we are all taxpayers and we expect good service, that we also need to fully respect our village team because they're working really hard for us every day. Any other announcements?
I do have one.
Patty?
So the ice storm, obviously, knocked down a lot of limbs all throughout the village. And although we don't normally pick up brush and limbs, we will be picking up the brush and limbs from the ice storm after December the 5th. So if you have brushed limbs, things that fell during the storm, put them at your curb. Just leave them there. They will sit there until after December 5th, and then the crews will come by and get them. So take your time, get them out there. Obviously, you've got a couple of weeks. But we are going to offer that service because this was such an extensive event, and it's going to be necessary to try to help folks get the yards cleaned up. So just move those to the curb, leave them sit there. You have until December 5th to get them there. And then probably on the 6th and 7th, they'll try to do it barring any other weather-related emergencies that draw their attention elsewhere. But if you put them there, we will eventually get them. They just have to be there by the 5th.
Okay, thanks Patty.
And I would like to thank Jordan Gray for stepping into the fray tonight and acting as our station manager because unfortunately Spencer Glazer could not be here with us tonight.
All right. Make sure to get my good side, Jordan. I do have a few announcements, as always. So first of all, I do want to mention that December 3rd, our next council meeting, we will be unveiling the Yellow Springs Active Transportation Plan. So we are going to have Tool Design Group here to do a brief presentation about that and talk about our next steps. If you don't already know, the tree lighting ceremony is going to be this Wednesday, November 21st. I know Dino's is providing hot cocoa. And we've got Brittany Baum, who is opening a new business downtown. The Green Canteen is going to be providing pretzel bites. So get there at 6:00 PM for warm drinks and for that lighting. I was also asked to announce that businesses downtown should let the Chamber know by November 21st if they're participating in the Holiday Window Contest, which is going to be judged by the Arts and Culture Commission. And what else do I have? That, yeah, I think you can sign up, actually, you can sign up up till November 30th at YSCamber.org, info@YSCamber.org. The Community Thanksgiving is going to be this Thursday from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Presbyterian Church. I always cook a turkey, so make sure to look for mine because it's going to be rind for two days. So it's going to be really good. And, um...
Tomorrow.
Huh?
We can put it in tomorrow.
Yes, I'm putting it in tomorrow, so it's going to be ready to go. And I think the only other thing, I just wanted to clarify because I know there's been a lot of discussion about the Planning Commission meeting on Monday. And I want to make it clear that, you know, the discussion about how we, you know, make projects that fit our village is a very important one that council is thinking long and hard about with policy. And I just want to be clear that by no means do we think a project like this is warehousing our elderly, to be blunt. And we want to, you know, really tip our hat to the fact that Home Inc. has been working hard to propose a project that we will be evaluating more completely. But I strongly believe that apartment buildings and rentals can be done in a way that fits our village values. And so I want to make it clear that by no means is there any implied bias against a variety of housing options. And I think it's really important, moving forward, to understand that Planning Commission and village council is looking very carefully at all of these projects, understanding that, you know, we've got a lot of priorities, and affordable housing is a really important one. So... Any other announcements? Judith?
Well, it's my last meeting. My last meeting brought all you out to say goodbye. Appreciate it. Appreciate that there are so many great candidates to replace me. I felt a little bad leaving early, feeling like I was being a little irresponsible. But I had personal reasons I felt was important. And then when all you guys came forward, I was like, this was definitely meant to be. So anyway, it's been great serving the community. And good luck to council and the new member going forward.
Thanks Judith. All right, so we next have the consent agenda. And actually, I think I need to pull both of them off because I have something I want to clarify for each set of minutes. So first of all, with the budget work session, and if any other council members, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a statement at the bottom of page 1 that council agreed to the new cruiser. And I did not remember that that was the upshot of our discussion. So I know we, you know, discussed some different options, but I did not remember it that way.
I didn't remember it that way, though. In talking with Patty, I understood that staff was willing to go have the cruiser be still in the budget and the staff would have the old cruiser.
The staff car taken out, yeah.
So, but I agree that I didn't recall council agreeing.
Okay, all right. So I guess I'd like to, I guess, make a motion that we modify that, just delete that statement.
That's fine because the minutes are not, they're not exact. It sort of pulled out key pieces. There was a lot of over talking. The video was difficult.
Sure.
So just taking it out, I don't think changes.
Sure. I mean, we discussed it. We just didn't come to any conclusions that I remembered. So, um...
Okay.
Do I get a second for that?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Is that the only one? Did you say you had the minutes?
Oh, just for that one. That was the only change I had. Were there any other? So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So then for November 5th, there was a statement, this is the bottom of page, I'm sorry, middle of page 8. And I see why I got confused, but this was in our discussion where Kevin, you pointed out that it was important to have the chief and the village manager involved. And then we also talked about the mayor. So the statement I made was that we could not require the mayor to participate. But I did not say that we could not require the chief and the village manager to participate. So...
Is that the, well, it says October 15th. Is that...
That's what I just...
Well, that would be your next correction.
Yeah, yeah, we should fix that, too.
It's November...
It's November 5th.
Yep.
But, yeah, the distinction was that, you know, we expected the chief and the village manager to be ex officio members, but that, you know, we can't require that of the mayor. But we hope that the mayor will participate as well.
Got it.
So I guess I'd like to make a motion, yeah.
Are you going to do each correction separate or...
Oh, let's do them all together.
Okay. On page 7, you know, a little further down than halfway, it's quoting me. "Policing is not about expertise, it is about values." Well, I don't believe I would have said that, and that's not, and what I'm guessing, what I remember talking about is not just about, it's not just about expertise, it's also about values, something like that. I did not go back to the tape and try to find exactly my wording.
Okay. And then we're going to correct the date. Anything else on this set of minutes?
You can just move to approve them as amended, and I've got it.
Okay.
So the record will be the changes.
Great. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, reviewing the agenda. Any changes, additions?
Yes. I would like the option of, after we discuss the general fund, if we haven't come to final agreement about the budget, I would like the option to nominate Judith for a one-month term before the new councilperson steps in. The reason why I would like to do that is I'm uncomfortable having someone step in on a budget process that's been taking hours. And I'm also uncomfortable telling them not to vote on it, so...
Okay, so that would potentially be under new business. I would also, and I know we have a long meeting tonight, but there are two things that I think we have to briefly talk about. One of them is evaluations for our direct reports. And that should just be very brief. And the second thing is I'd like to propose something about the revolving loan fund, and I will also keep that very brief. So those would, I guess, be under new business as well.
And Kevin, you wanted to add a nomination for Mark Ewalt?
Yes, thank you.
For energy board? We already did this.
We, I don't remember, and there's no record.
I thought we had.
So we did meet to discuss Mark Ewalt's qualifications for energy board. He's a past member, so his past experience and work experience, I think, speak for themselves.
Okay, so we can do that when we report out on commissions?
Okay.
Okay, awesome.
I'm just trying to get it off my plate.
Yeah?
Because I think we just missed it.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's move into petitions and communications. Mary Ann?
Yes, we had several communications. One was from the Green County Combined Health Board regarding some uptick in HIV cases, which have apparently been resulting from infections from shared needles. And to let people know that there is a needle exchange program in Green County, and there is free testing for HIV. The letter that came from the Environmental Commission, was submitted by the Environmental Commission and was sent by the village manager, and actually signed by me, was sent to the Ohio EPA regarding the Verna contamination. And that's in the packet. There was a letter from Richard Lepides in support of, which Home Inc. project was it? The senior housing project? And there was a newsletter from the National Association on Mental Illness from Clark, Green, and Madison County.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to move into our legislation. And the first thing on the docket is ordinance 201847. Judy, we can, I guess we should read it in full.
Okay. This is enacting new chapter 607 entitled Use of Surveillance Technology of the Codified Ordinances of the Yellow Springs, Ohio. Whereas surveillance technologies are being implemented by law enforcement departments across the United States that could have a significant impact on civil rights and civil liberties; and whereas village council has determined that it is in the best interest of the village of Yellow Springs to require a public hearing before any such technology is acquired or used by the village; and whereas village council finds it is essential to have an informed public discussion about decisions related to surveillance technology and the impact on privacy, the potential of governmental intrusion into people's lives, and the impacts such technologies may have on civil rights and civil liberties, including those rights guaranteed by the Ohio and United States constitutions and the First, Fourth, and Fourteenth Amendments to the United States Constitution; and whereas village council finds that legally enforceable safeguards, including transparency, oversight, and accountability measures, must be in place to protect civil rights and civil liberties before surveillance technology is deployed by the village; and whereas village council finds that annual surveillance technology reports should be provided by village staff to village council for the purpose of providing information on the use of such technologies to the public; now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, a new chapter 607 entitled Use of Surveillance Technology of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, be enacted to read as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herein. Section 2, this ordinance is hereby authorized under the village's home rule powers as set forth in Article 1, Section 3 of the Charter of Yellow Springs, Ohio, necessary for the benefit of the health, safety, and welfare of the village, including the protection of an individual's privacy rights. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect at the earliest date allowed by law.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I move.
Second.
All right, so this is the second reading, so we're going to open a public hearing. And I saw Ellis. Yeah, Ellis, do you want to say a few words?
How does he breathe?
Hi, Ellis Jacobs. Nice to see all of you. I just got to acknowledge Judith, since this is her last meeting, you've done a marvelous job. Thank you for all the work you've done. It's been really exemplary. So I want to, in relationship to this particular ordinance, I just want to thank everybody that did some work on it, the Yellow Springs Justice Task Force, particularly Steve McQueen and Bill Randolph, the village solicitor, the chief, Patty, who all contributed to turning out an ordinance that I think is really well-balanced and accomplishes the goals that we set out to achieve here. And of course, I want to thank village council for being interested in this and supportive of it, as you were at the last meeting where you talked about it. This ordinance provides really important civil liberties and civil rights protections for the people of the village. I think the need for ordinances like this is being identified all over the country. In fact, after the article about last, the last meeting appeared in the Yellow Springs News, I got an email from a young attorney in New Orleans, who used to live here in the Yellow Springs, about a situation in New Orleans where people discovered that the police there had been using some surveillance technology that nobody knew about. And it created quite a scandal. With an ordinance like this in place, we will never face a situation like that. By passing this, Yellow Springs will be the first municipality in the state of Ohio to pass an ordinance like this. I don't think we'll be the last. And so let me just say that I thank you for being so forward-looking and for taking this important step.
Thanks, Ellis.
And thank you for your work on it, too, Ellis.
Yeah, we really appreciate that.
You worked very hard on it as well.
Sure. And I just got to say I got to run home because some of us, Brian, are turkeys for three days.
Yes, yes.
You better not. Okay, be with me.
Mine got dry rind last night, so...
Chris, do you want to add anything?
Really, I can summarize it. I can answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, great. I just wanted to highlight, and this is not a change, I appreciate the response to some of the comments that we made at the last meeting. When I read it through at this time, I thought I didn't have any questions. I just want to highlight with section 607.03(c)(8), where it talks about identifying the process to communicate with council, that, you know, first of all, keep in mind that we have some, you know, set ways that you communicate with council, which includes our meetings where we would discuss this, the use of surveillance technology, as well as, you know, being able to communicate with us by email through our clerk. But, you know, I just wanted to highlight that that's not an ambiguous thing. We always provide a lot of opportunity for public feedback. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from citizens? All right, oh, yes, please. Dorothy. I don't mind stating your name.
Yes, my name is Dorothy Bouquet. Do I need to give my address here? No, I don't.
Uh, no, that's okay.
At the commissioners, you have to do that. I wanted to thank it is for this piece of legislation. I love the intent of it. I do have a question, maybe because it was how it was worded in the YS news. I know that when there is a state of emergency, then the police department can use surveillance technology without consulting you guys. Is that right?
No.
No?
So it mentions the chief, the village manager, and council president.
Okay.
So you have a check and balance because an elected official is part of that decision.
Got it, perfect. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
All right. There's a time limitation, too.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, Judy, if you could do the roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry, Jordan. Wow. I thought you were just moving the camera. All right.
It's not on me. Jordan Gray, just, so my understanding is that there's an unmanned aerial vehicle perimeter, you know, that's larger than the airport north of us, that covers, I think, Yellow Springs. I don't know this for sure, but I believe so. And I just didn't know how that might be mediated or managed. And because I think that there might be like this larger zone that covers Yellow Springs. I just wonder if that could be checked into, I think that could be a potential, another overlap, like, of a problem. So anyway.
Okay.
You're saying there's surveillance coming from north?
Well, normally, the drones and so forth that get flown, normally they have to be like within your eyesight. But I think that there's a region around here, maybe, I want to say 28-kilometer range, that allows for testing and for certain machines to be run that's beyond the line of sight. And I just wondered if that's not on your radar. It might be something to look, I'll look into it, too, but...
Yeah, I think, I want to be clear that the ordinance only is the village's use of surveillance technology. We can't control anyone else's use, but it would be good to know if there is...
So the limits of what the protection is for.
Yeah.
There might be another overlap. Okay, thank you.
Good question. All right, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Judy, roll call, please?
Yes, Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Hemfling.
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Hausch?
Yes. All right, next we have a second reading for ordinance 201848. And Judy, let's just do it by title only.
Yes. This is repealing sections 1042.01i, 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, and enacting new sections 1042.01i, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
I think she should have to read the whole.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I move.
I'm second.
All right. Who's talking about this one?
I guess I am.
Okay.
So currently, if you are a residential customer and you have your own generation by either solar or wind, you are reimbursed for, at the end of the year, at one time of year, we true it up. And if you produce more than you use, you are reimbursed for the 11 cents per kilowatt hour, the power supply cost, and currently, the kilowatt hour tax, which is an excise tax imposed by the state on energy generation delivered to an end user. If we reimburse for the kilowatt hour tax, then we are debiting the electric fund twice for that, once to reimburse the person who hasn't paid the kilowatt hour tax, and one wants to transfer it, by law, we have to transfer it to either the general fund or to the state, depending on where the end user is located. So if the end user is located within the municipal limits of the village, then we have to move it from our electric fund where it is collected into. We are required to transfer it into the general fund by law. If the end user is outside the village, then whatever we collect from that end user goes to the state. This ordinance simply takes the kilowatt hour excise tax out of the mix. The person who is the residential user, who is still generating by either solar or wind, still gets reimbursed the 11 cents per kilowatt hour and the power supply cost, just not the kilowatt hour tax itself.
Okay. So this is the second reading, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Questions or comments from council? Questions or comments from citizens? All right, if not, I will close the public hearing. And Judy, if you could do the roll call, please?
Yes, Hemfling.
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Hausch?
Yes. Okay. We have the first reading of ordinance 201849. And Judy, let's go ahead and read that in full.
All right, this is enacting a new chapter 290 entitled Justice System Commission of Title 8 Boards and Commissions of Part II Administration Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio. Whereas village officials have undertaken a review of the roles and responsibilities of the Justice System Task Force, which was created in 2016 to review and update the village justice system. And whereas it is village council's intent to codify its continued commitment to ongoing review and research of best practices for a fair, responsive, and forward-thinking village justice system. And whereas village council recognizes the importance of gathering and considering the experiences, insights, and professional opinion of those employees tasked with communicating and carrying out policy respective to enforcement and justice in the village, as well as that of qualified and committed citizens. Now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, a new chapter 290 Justice System Commission of Title 8 Boards and Commissions of Part II Administration Code of the Codified Ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs is hereby enacted. To read is set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and incorporated herein. Section 2, this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force at the earliest date permitted by law.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right, Judith?
So, yeah, I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory. I think I want to start out saying that we owe a very large thank you to our Justice System Task Force. We had our last meeting this month. We kind of finished things up. People are, we brought, are bringing together ideas we want to pass on to the council in terms of, you know, little unfinished business, things that we never got to that we want to, you know, as part of your goals setting in 2019, we thought would be helpful to you. That's our purpose. That's our purpose. So a very big thank you to the Justice System Commission members. It was a real example of volunteers, you know, working really hard for the village. Didn't do everything perfectly. We ran in, we had some difficulties and struggles along the way. But I think what we learned from those struggles is going to really inform and strengthen the Justice System Commission, the idea of the Justice System Commission. I did have a couple of little edits, and I don't know, maybe we should, I shared them with Brian, and I'm wondering if we should just include them in. They're just little, really, around the powers and duties, just a little more detail about the diligent recommendation development and how we stay very connected in with the goals of council, and then council stays in the mix as the commission is, you know, working on its work. And it was something we were trying to do with the task force, and it seemed like it would be good to kind of incorporate some of that language.
And that's on the.
It's on here, actually, yes. The first thing was just sort of clarification because it, we had the membership and procedure, the chair, the language around the chair, which said it would be elected once a year. I mean, we ended up changing our chair a little bit in the, that didn't quite exactly meet that. So just kind of leaving a little more flexibility that there would be elections, no less frequently than one per year, but that would kind of give a little more flexibility around that. The agenda planning, I think we changed some of the language. I'm sorry. Here we go.
It's on the table. I don't have one.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. And then on the, so that's the, so the main thing is, it just gives a little more flexibility for the committee to, you know, work out if it needs to make any changes in leadership that, you know, that it, in the context of one year, that it can do that without kind of violating the rules. And then the second thing is, under the powers and duties, on the new sheets, it's A, B, and C, the new language. And then, I kind of screwed up, and under B, so it's just talking about, as part of diligent recommendation development, the commission should, and it's just a little more detail. It includes, you know, the input from staff, so that, you know, legal and practical concerns are, you know, a part of the process. Actually, on B, we may not want to make these official changes today since we haven't had time to look at it, but under B, work to educate itself and the community, community on current village practices, the effects, so this is a proposed new language, the effects of those practices and who is affected, and to research best practices, learn about the community's concerns and priorities regarding security and justice. So it just sort of pulls in the community concerns into the process, kind of details that. So if council doesn't want to make those changes tonight, since I got it here very late, we could just get it in the package for the next time. Could I just make two quick comments? Yeah. And I'm not saying you can't change the, the membership and procedure, but council did last year or the year before go through the process of standardizing.
Yeah.
All of the commission ordinances, and this would be a change.
Right.
So I just want you to be aware of that. Again, I'm not saying you can't do it. Yeah, I thought that Brian had talked about maybe relooking at those things, was I understanding that, Brian? And I thought this might be, maybe we want to hold it till we look at everybody, or maybe we want to, if we think it's a good change, you know, we're going to use it as a standard. It's not life or death, whether we. And then, and then the second thing is, in the powers and duties, in A, it, it says, the second sentence is, all such recommendations will consider input from staff. And in your revision, you say should. And I just want to point out that one is you will do it, the other is you might do it, and I'm not sure what the intent is. Maybe we should say will. I mean, I think, no, I mean, it's expected. Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the difference between should and shall. Yeah. I know, I did want to say, I talked to the mayor, and I talked to the chief, and, you know, they both were very positive, participating as ex officio members. Right. So I don't know how we want to handle this thing.
Well, I mean, all these changes seem like positives to me. But, you know, I think we do have a second reading of this. I guess my thought would be that we go ahead and take a vote on the ordinance, you know, in concept, and then we'll have these updated changes reflected for the next meeting. So any other questions or comments from council? Yeah, questions or comments from citizens? Yes, Sean? If you don't mind saying your name.
Yeah, my name is Sean. Happy to be here. Thanks so much for a chance to speak on this issue. I just wanted to raise the issue of the ex officio member of being the police and the mayor, particularly the police. I have brought this up with Judith over a month ago. Very strongly concerned myself, also speaking on behalf of the Yellow Springs Police Accountability Coalition, which were largely supporting victims of police misconduct in Yellow Springs. And, well, we don't believe that it's appropriate to have a police officer as a member of an organization that is purportedly going to reform the police. That's like having, you know, somebody sit on the panel that's going to hire or fire them. It's just inappropriate. You know, there's, there's a lot of people, for example, who are part of our Police Accountability Coalition, that don't even feel comfortable in this building because the police are located here. And, you know, we give a lot of deference to the police, and even more so when they're sitting right there. There needs to be the ability for the Justice System Commission to meet aside from the police and discuss issues as a civilian oversight or a civilian entity, without, you know, the prosecutor wing, which is seen in the mayor, or the chief of police. So, yeah, strongly calling to take out the, the membership of the police chief, or even police officer, or even any ex-police on the board itself, and to review how the membership is going to be taken up. I think there needs to be better ways to, you know, bring, bring people into the Justice System Commission that will actually, you know, take the issue of police accountability seriously. Because, you know, this is something that you see in a lot of other communities, where the Justice System Commission, or the Police Oversight Board, or Police Review Board, they end up just being like a whitewash. They don't take the issue seriously, or they give so much deference to the police that they end up simply being part of that, that blue, that blue wall. And, and so, you know, I invite you, Judith, to reach out to the Yellow Springs Police Accountability Coalition and to myself individually, and talk to, talk about these issues. I, you know, I think that it's inappropriate to put off a group, a community group, in such a small community, that is so serious and passionate about these issues of police accountability, when you're trying to set up a police, Justice System Commission, rather.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to say, just to be clear about the role of the commission, it will not be an oversight of our police department. It is a body that will be recommending policy to the village council.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
And that body's also going to review the proposal for a citizen review board, which is a separate entity. So with that, Judy, let's go.
Other comments?
Oh, are there other comments? Okay, yes. Athene?
I'm not a part of Y S PAC today, but our comments are pretty similar. When I saw, I mean, I've been so busy, so today's the first time I can comment on it. When I saw that you guys were kind of recommending a police officer be on the commission, I kind of went, because I had a conversation with somebody about eight months ago over that, and my response to them was, there is no way we're going to trust your commission with a police officer on there. This town is very, very small, and we already have a lot of trust issues. And so I, it's not that I'm saying you can't talk to the police, so run your submissions or suggestions by the police, or get feedback from the police, because clearly they're influenced by it, but you just can't have one on the commission. I talked to someone in Dayton, because I was sort of trying to figure out how this goes, and they said they absolutely have police on their commission. Some of their meetings are closed as well. You guys cannot have closed meetings, for the most part. We, we won't trust that, we won't accept that. But one of the huge differences between them and us is they're big. They can have a lot of dissenting voices. They can really throw down with each other. We can't. We're too small, people know each other, and so I just, I didn't know he was going to comment that. I just wanted to support that concept, that, that you just can't have a police officer or the police chief on the commission, so.
And your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Athena Fannin, and I reject the idea that we should have to give addresses. Thanks.
I also wanted to note the, we've asked the mayor, the village manager, and our chief for their representative, they will be ex officio, they will be non-voting members. And I did have one question for Chris. The mayor wanted to be sure, you know, that, you know, you had considered her participation, she'd like to participate, that it doesn't cause any conflicts. She asked me to ask you that.
The answer is no, would not.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
My name's, my name's William Toh, and my concern is, as there's, other people have mentioned trust issues with the police, a concern would be, police, I didn't have a chance to speak with someone that works for the village, and, because I wanted to quote them as saying that it's more common than you think of where police are on the take, and that's caused for concern with the increasing surveillance, because surveillance can be used against people in a malicious way, because those are not, you know, those officers that are, have very minimal training to become an officer, so they could be a criminal and just sign up to be a cop, and then all of a sudden, there you go, you got gang members working for the police, you know? So that's my concern. And I'm speaking about this because I've had direct experience of it, and other people are aware of things that are going on that's just not right. So thank you for listening.
All right, thanks.
The world's watching.
I'm glad they are, because we are making a difference. And I'm, I'm just going to speak a little bit about this, because we should be looking at this as a village as a big win. And what's important here is not to alienate any part of the team that's working on improving our justice system. So we tried to have a, with the Justice System Task Force, to remove, you know, the ex officio positions. That did not work. And so one of the reasons that we're changing the format is because we realized that we all need to be at the table working through these issues. In terms of some of the concerns that have been raised, we are thinking about a citizen review board, and we will review that as a potential policy initiative. But I feel very confident that our police department wants to be on board and make changes. Our village manager's been very open, and council's spent a lot of time on this. So I'm going to just say I'm in full support of the, you know, the proposal that we've made. And with that, I think we can go ahead and take a.
It did not work because the police department did not come to the table as their responsibility. So that just needs to be said, because I watched the whole thing. So if we're going to make it easier for them, when they're not prepared to take responsibility, that's concerning.
Okay, I, well, so, and again, I appreciate the comments, but we have looked at this very carefully, and this is going to be a winning combination. So I just want you to think about how we are a village that needs to support all of these initiatives and work together, and complaints that are not constructive are not going to help us resolve these problems. But I do want everyone to continue to come to the table and help us do what we need to do to make positive change. So, yes.
I would like to say also that the most effective way to change a system is to involve the people who are in the system in, in developing the change. Now, the trust issue is another matter. I mean, that's what we've been hearing, and that's going to have to be dealt with. But by not, not involving police officers in the system in which we're changing is doomed to fail.
I agree.
That was not my suggestion. That wasn't my suggestion is to not involve them at all. I mean, we can envision a system in which they're invited to the table on invitation only, and, and then they can, they can be briefed on, on changes, but then they leave the room. And then the decisions on how to govern, best govern them are then made by a civilian government.
Okay, thanks, Sean. And, you know, it's really not appropriate to keep on coming up to the mic. You got to be respectful of the fact that we've got many items on our agenda, many priorities, and you already stated your opinion.
It's also not appropriate for you to suggest that our complaints are not constructive.
We are not suggesting it, but we're probably going to be here till 11 o'clock.
You did just say, you know, no complaints that are unconstructive. I mean, that's, that's not appropriate.
Okay, so with that, can we take a vote, please?
Yes, Hempfling.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Haush.
Yes. Okay. So we are now going to move into Resolution 201841. And Judy, if you could read that in full, please?
Okay, this is approving the Yellow Springs Arts Council request for placement of a permanent sculpture on village property and establishing conditions. Whereas Wheeling Gaunt has been chosen by a diverse set of leading Yellow Springs community organizations to be remembered with a life-size bronze sculpture of his likeness as a reminder of his spirit and a tribute to his significant contributions to the AME Church Wilberforce and an early and integral member of the Yellow Springs community. And whereas the village of Yellow Springs has a vibrant, active, and talented artistic community dedicated to the production of original pieces across all artistic mediums. And whereas Yellow Springs Arts Council has requested permission to place the completed sculpture at Hill Doron Park. And whereas Yellow Springs Arts Council has agreed to accept all responsibility for the care and maintenance of the sculpture, now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, Yellow Springs Arts Council shall, in cooperation and consultation with the Yellow Springs village manager, place the aforementioned Wheeling Gaunt sculpture at Hill Doron Park in the location agreed upon by the Arts Council and village council. Section 2, Yellow Springs Arts Council shall be wholly responsible for the care and maintenance of the sculpture. Section 3, any future desire on the part of either village council or the Arts Council to alter, remove, or move the sculpture shall be enacted in cooperation with village council, the village manager, and the Arts Council.
Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I move.
Second.
All right. Lisa, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we're very excited that this project is coming to fruition. It's a very large project that starts with a life-size sculpture, and there's also a mural planned. I know that Cheryl Durgens is here in the audience, who's really an expert on what's going on. So Cheryl, I'd like to invite you, if you'd like to make a few comments about the project.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm Cheryl Durgens. Just wanted to say that Wheeling Gaunt, in many ways embodies a lot of what I would say would be perseverance and strength. I think as a former enslaved man coming to Yellow Springs in the late 1800s, he really did bring a level of diversity to the community, like, well before we, I mean, to be quite frank, we've lost a lot of diversity. Let me just be real about it. A hundred, over a hundred years ago, there were a wave of families that came in that were of African, an African-American descent to this community. And it would be, I think, a disservice for the community not to honor and acknowledge that. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions or comments from council?
It's exciting.
It is really exciting.
Thank you for all the work you've been doing on this.
Yeah, and I do want to highlight, you know, some other aspects of this that, you know, I think are good to get on the record. One of those being that, you know, there's a mural aspect to this, that we want to make a, you know, really cool community engagement opportunity. And the other thing is, you know, we've been talking about how to make that whole area a really nice trailhead. You know, it's right there on the, what, south side of the train station. So, I think there's some really important opportunities there that are going to make that a great place.
The bike trails on the south.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought we were going to be on the south side.
No, west.
Yeah?
West, south.
We're going to be-
It's a confusing triangular part. We've had this conversation before.
We're going to be towards, we're going to be towards Xenia. So, yeah, so.
I was going to say, I'm really pleased about this project, because I think it is so important that these early, powerful leaders of our community are visible, you know, and how important it is for our young people. I think it's very important. I think it's wonderful. I really appreciate everybody that's been willing.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I forgot to make one announcement, and the mention of Wheeling Gaunt reminded me that the flour and sugar delivery started today. So, it's a very long list. It will probably take the crews the next two days to get through that, but the deliveries did start today.
All right. And is there still an opportunity, if you're not on the list, to get on the list?
You can give me a call, and I will see what I can do. Ruth Ann is out this week on vacation, so if you call the office, please leave a message. I am checking the messages. I will call you back.
All right.
If you may say, people who don't know what that is?
Okay. Wheeling Gaunt bequeathed the property, which is now Gaunt Park, to the village with, not necessarily for a park, but with the disclaimer that the proceeds from that land should provide an annual flour and sugar donation to the widows and orphans, was the way that it was worded in the village. So, we do include widows and widowers at this point, and so, they get a bag of flour and a bag of sugar, once a year, that is delivered by our electric crew. We buy it from Tom's Market. They picked it up this afternoon and started the deliveries around town. So, if you want to be on that list, please give me a call, and if you see the guys out knocking on doors and carrying bags of flour and sugar around, that's what it's about.
All right. Thanks a lot. All right. So, next on the agenda is citizen concerns, and this is the time in our meeting when we invite any comments for items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and also be mindful of the fact that we have probably two and a half more hours of meeting time ahead of us, so please be respectful of that. So, do we have any citizen concerns?
Oh, here, I pass this down.
Oh, you guys have names?
Yeah.
All right. And please state your name, and-
Okay, sure. Yeah, I'm Patrick Lake. On the issue of trust with law enforcement and the residents of town, I just have a suggestion. Something that we could do to address it would be, within a reasonable amount of time, any full-time law enforcement officer must establish residency in the village. I think if we can see our officers at the grocery store in town, that can be something that can be repaired. I'm sure there are other issues that need to be addressed around that suggestion, but just something to think about.
Okay. And thanks for that suggestion. I will say legally, we cannot require that, but the council has talked about possibly incentivizing living in the village, and so, that is something that we will continue to think about. And so, okay, Kevin? Got you on the list? McGruder?
My name is Kevin McGruder, and I am on the Board of Yellow Springs Home, Inc., where I serve as treasurer, and I'm also a member of the Village Managers Housing Advisory Board. I've worked in the area of affordable housing since I graduated from college in 1979. Until this year, Yellow Springs Home, Inc. developed single-family homes, one home at a time. But, in this, our 20th anniversary year, we are committed to increasing the scale of our development, in order to better meet the demand for housing affordable to low and moderate-income families in Yellow Springs. We currently are constructing Forest Village Homes, six rental apartments on two Dayton Street sites. The Glen cottages development, for which we are requesting funding of $60,000 over two years from the village, will be a development at Xenia Avenue and Woodrow Street of 12 small homes for rent and for sale. That will be built in phases. This development represents the next step in our work. Yellow Springs Home, Inc. is a community development corporation, one of hundreds of similar community-based nonprofit organizations that, since the late 1960s, have developed housing for low and moderate-income people that most for-profit developers do not build for, because it is not sufficiently profitable. We appreciate the pocket neighborhood development and the planned unit development zoning changes that council has made to encourage more dense development in some areas of the village, which will reduce the cost of developing housing. We also appreciate the assistance that the village has provided Home, Inc., homes from waiving tap fees for utilities to providing land on Cemetery Street for the development of several new homes. While the bulk of the financing for Glen cottages will come from individual donors, the Federal Home Loan Bank of Cincinnati, and other sources, these donors are interested and will be inspired to provide future funding by evidence of local funding commitments. Our request to the village would match the commitment made by the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. We believe the funds would also demonstrate that the village is prepared to provide a modest financial commitment as an additional means of helping to achieve the village goal of encouraging the development of housing that is affordable to low and moderate-income people. As you know, Yellow Springs is unusual. In a rural region, we are a village that has long had a commitment to social justice and racial and economic diversity. Most community development corporations are in urban areas, where a wider range of foundations, large municipal budgets, and the potential for a variety of development opportunities can better support their work. The uniqueness of Yellow Springs has made it possible for us to have Yellow Springs Home, Inc. here, a community development corporation that can assist the village to demonstrate that housing can be built for low and moderate-income families in a village of relatively high incomes, and in a real estate market that is very desirable. This housing will enable more people who work in the village to also live here, and will attract young families to village schools. This work can be a model for other communities facing similar challenges across the country. Your consideration is appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Susan? Yes?
I'm Susan Stiles, and I wasn't sure if this was the appropriate time, because I'm about the Affordable Housing Fund.
So, actually, if it is about the Affordable Housing Fund, then you should wait.
Great.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have any other? Yes. Dorothy, I'll take you next, and if you could-
Hi, my name's Corey White.
Yep.
I'm a member of the Yellow Springs Police Accountability Coalition. We drafted this letter to read, if that's all right? No, it's not too long.
Okay.
Dear Yellow Springs Village Council, please consider the following draft resolution for adoption before the end of the year regarding the annual Yellow Springs New Year's Ball Drop. Whereas, an incident of police excessive use of force and general misconduct following the annual Yellow Springs New Year's Eve Ball Drop, bringing in the year 2017, resulted in around 300 villagers attending the first council meeting in the new year, and the national news covering the incident. Whereas, the police had removed the protective police barricade from both sides of the State Route 68 within 15 minutes after midnight, while hundreds of citizens were still surrounding the recently lowered disco ball, exposing the crowd to oncoming traffic during a night in time notorious for drunk driving. Whereas, police pushed their vehicle into the crowd without making an order to disperse, despite numerous requests made from the multiple citizens, independent from each other, to make a public announcement to disperse the crowd, or turn off the sirens and lights, and allow the annual event to continue. Whereas, despite generalized discontent from the mostly-white crowd, police singled out and body slammed a non-white citizen in a predominantly-white community. Whereas, a police officer fired a taser into the crowd as a means of crowd control, while the crowd successfully pried the body-slam victim from the attacking officer. Whereas, the New York Times coverage of the incident published 5th of February 2017, entitled "A Small Ohio Town clamors to curb aggressive policing," identified subtle differences in perspective. White residents were complaining largely about the officer's violation of social norms in a laid-back town, while black residents focused on what they saw as a racially-biased force that targeted them regularly. Whereas, the village council responses to the incident so far have not included anything which would actually prevent the incident from happening again. For example, taser guidelines were violated during the incident, so passing further taser policies does not resolve that issue. Implicit bias training do not amount to prohibiting conduct. The social worker appointed since the incident has identified the real problem with local policing is finding ways to remove bad apples from the onlookers of police conduct. Just because the chief of police is new doesn't mean similar mistakes might not be made in the future. Note, several of these proposals were already being considered before New Year's Eve 2017 by the Justice System Task Force, which was created after Paul Shank was shot and killed in his home by police after calling them for help. Be it therefore resolved, Yellow Springs Police are, from this point forward, not to remove citizens in the event safely barricades from the streets after the annual Y.S. New Year's Eve Ball Drop before 1:00 a.m., unless, in the case of an imminent emergency or imminent threat to life or injury, and if any crowd remains after 1:00 a.m., the police are to be courteous in their request to vacate the area. Be it furthermore resolved, as in historic custom, police are to exercise their discretionary authority by intentionally not enforcing laws restricting public consumption of and public intoxication from alcohol by adults 21-years-or-older for the first hour of each New Year with the security barricade around the Yellow Springs New Year's Eve Ball Drop event, so long as the individual does not pose a serious risk to themselves, to property, or other people present. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Any other citizen yet? I'm sorry, Dorothy, you're next. Yes.
Hi, Dorothy Boukay. So, my question was really to follow up with what Patrick asked you, and you mentioned that you, the council, will be discussing incentives to have law enforcement officers staying in the village. What's the procedure here? Are you working with a commission? Is it something that is internal?
What I meant is that it's an issue that's been brought up, that I would expect that our Justice System Commission will look into.
So, the Justice System Commission should make recommendations, and then it will go through the motions that way? So, if we want to work on this, we work with the Justice Commission, or we reach out to you?
Yeah, the Justice System Commission, which we will be forming by January. So, we'll be sending out a call for membership and all of that, so.
Did you hear of it? Okay, thank you. I think it might be February.
Okay.
It's going to take a little time.
Well, we'll at least put the call out by January, so, yes. Yes, Athena?
And I'll just say, I think it's a great idea. We just, we have to figure out if it's a possibility.
Yep.
Athena Fannin, last week I came and I talked to you about the R.B. ordinance, and I want to thank you guys. That was a very unclear situation, and you guys, that somebody vulnerable was already starting to get caught up in that, and you guys clarified that pretty quickly, or somehow, through the system, that got clarified for the police. So, on those people's behalf, and on the behalf of everybody affected by those policies, I really, really want to thank you guys for that clarification. Yeah, I think my final comment is, this situation demonstrates how much power and how much you guys influence day-to-day lives, so I'm grateful.
Thanks, Athena, and I think that's a very good point. Any other comments? Sean?
Thank you. I'd just like to invite you to respond to the proposed resolution.
We got it today, so it will be in our packet for the next meeting, and I think that would be an opportunity for us to comment more on it, so.
Does that mean it would be an agenda item on the next?
I'm not going to guarantee that, but it will be in the packet.
So, it might be an agenda item?
I, we, I'm thinking about this meeting right now, so, thanks, Sean.
Well, we look forward to you seriously considering it as an agenda item. Honestly, a lot of people from the community really cared about this issue two years ago. New Year's Eve is coming up, and so, please do consider really, you know, taking this seriously. You know, we've elected all of you to take our concerns seriously, and, you know, we hope that you take that to heart. Now, I also want to invite Judith to, you know, as your last time here, to apologize to me regarding having spread inaccurate information about me that you got from the chief of police.
I'm just going to comment that that's inappropriate. No one knows what the content of that is. It's not appropriate to call out a canceled council member. I'm going to have to ask you not to make that request, and please sit down.
I'm sorry. Are you saying that I don't get to finish my three minutes?
You can't have a back-and-forth exchange with a council member concerning a situation about which no one knows anything.
Well, let me just take the rest of my time to say exactly what it was. Okay, I was raped by a member of-
Sean, you have said, probably everyone in Yellow Springs knows this. You have said this over and over. It was a very unfortunate thing, but we don't want to hear it again.
I will remember that you said you don't want to hear it again, but you know what? I don't want to talk about it ever, okay? I don't ever want to talk about this, but I don't want this to ever happen to anybody in this town again, and that's why I talk about it, because I care about the protection of children, the safety of children.
So, Sean, if you're not going to sit down-
And the fact that you would say, I don't want to hear it ever again, think about that. If we don't, if we don't talk about it, these issues of how our police are handling the issues of sexual abuse, then we are ensuring that they will, our elected officials will be complicit.
Okay. Do we have any other citizen concerns? Okay, if not, we're going to move into special reports, and so, this is kind of wrapping up things with the budget, and is Colleen back yet?
Oh, she was in the hall.
Okay. And, well, I'll just wait for Colleen to come back.
I have a long stomach ache.
Yes. So, Colleen, I'll just kind of preface by saying, and to council as well, I think the best way for us to use our budget time is to just target some of the key areas where we've got, you know, some things to still wrap up, and so, we don't need to do a, you know, big overview. And I am good with Mary Ann, since you did such a nice job of outlining some of your items. Maybe we could just start with some of those?
Can I do-
Yes.
Could we have just a brief, Colleen gave everyone-
Sure.
-this handout, and just in our conversations over the last month or six weeks, it's become, it's become evident to us that some people understand the difference between funds and appropriated funds, and some don't, and these conversations aren't, it's not just council member, it's citizens, and I think just a brief explanation of funds versus appropriated funds, because if you, you need to understand that once you put, you appropriate an amount of funding to a particular item in the budget, whether that item be electric supplies, or affordable housing, or revolving loan fund, that money is appropriated to that line and cannot be used for anything else. And the rest of the money that's sitting over here in your fund balance is what's available for last-minute items that come up. So, essentially- So essentially, if you think of it, Colleen, if you want to explain your checkbook theory, that might be a-
And Patty did a really good idea, so this, I'll keep this real brief. In the content of financial reporting, the term "fund balance" is used to describe the net position of governmental funds, similar to your checkbook or savings balance. We record all the revenue that we spend in every fund, and we record all the expenditures. And the balance reflects what's still available in each fund. When we appropriate is what we're working on with this budget. The appropriation is an act of setting aside money for a specific purpose. So as we go through the budget, and we estimate from history and from known items to the best of our ability, the appropriations are what we're asking for to set aside to be able to spend with your approval of the budget. Money not spent in this budget is, stays in the fund balance. It stays in basically the savings or checking account. The budget, I always consider a not-to-exceed. So I try to keep the cap in there that I project I will need in all the funds and all the expense lines for 2019. If I go over, or something is unappropriate that we didn't realize, then we come back with a supplemental and explain what and why. So basically, we don't want to tie up all the fund balance on appropriations unless we know we're going to use it. Because then at the end of the year, I have to put that money back. I have to go back to the county and say, "We didn't need this much, we have to put it back." And then that makes it available for another purpose. And again, for anything that we don't have resolved right now, because we really are getting down to the wire on getting the basic budget approved, we can add in the first of the year. We can come in with council and say, "Okay, now we want to have this amount of money out of our fund balance to work on this project." So it's not that it can't happen next year, but if it's not kind of specific and clarified within this allotted time, we need to at least get the regular operating budget approved. So I want to answer any questions and make any changes that we can do, knowing that some of it might have to go into next year. Fund balance and appropriation, sorry, that got a little lengthy, I forget.
No, that was, that was good, thank you. So, kick it off, Mary Ann.
Yes, so I had five budget requests. The planning commission request is in the budget for the thirty thousand for the comprehensive plan. I understand that the two thousand five hundred that I was requesting for the Glass Farm Management could come out of the commission fund. That's cool. So that leaves, no, there were, I guess, four, four requests. The other two requests deal with housing. Now, it gets complicated because I know there's also an agenda item to start an affordable housing line in the budget, which I don't think we're ready for, but that's, I need to just set that aside. The two other requests that I have are that we, in this year's budget, include thirty thousand for the Glenn Cottage development, and that we also commit to do that in 2020. And whether that comes out of an affordable housing fund, or whether that comes out of the incentive line item that has eighty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, I'm not, whatever we, you advise, whatever council decides, I'm cool with that. But what I do think is important is that we not just say, "We're going to put money toward affordable housing," and not say, "What's going to happen with that money?" Or say, "Well, we'll decide what's going to happen with that money." Because the analogy I've been thinking about is that phrase, "A bird in the hand is worth two in the bush." If you have something, it's better than something that might be out there somewhere in some bush. Well, in this case, there are no birds in the bush. We have one affordable housing project, which is the Glenn Cottage, that has come to us, and it's taken years to acquire the property, to develop the concept, and get it in place where it can go for funding. If, if there were another affordable housing project that we might choose from, we would know it. And, and there's only one affordable housing organization in Yellow Springs. We have Green Met Housing, but they are not, I guess, they don't have any money. But for whatever reason, they're not doing anything. Habitat for Humanity won't touch Yellow Springs because the properties, the property costs too much. So we have one project, we have one opportunity to spend this money. And I think it's much more appropriate to say, "This is what the money's going to go for," than to say, "Well, we'll look around and figure out what's going to come." The other thing is the Glass Farm pre-development study that we, I don't, we frankly don't know how much it's going to cost. So that's more in line with what you were saying. I suggested twenty thousand because I was looking at, since we're not funding green space, it was fifty thousand, put thirty thousand toward the Glenn Cottage Development Project, and twenty for the Glass Farm. I don't think it's appropriate to put, to take twenty thousand out of an affordable housing fund for the Glass Farm. I think that's really misappropriating those funds because the Glass Farm is a mixed-income development. And I would think that once we get to the point where we start developing the Glass Farm, that it will be a special line item, a special project. And if we spend money now on it, in this study, that, that would get reimbursed at some point when we, when we sell the property to one or more developers. So those are the two things. And I, whatever you say, whatever, however you think it's best to put in the budget, I'm cool with, I just think it needs-
And I think Patty and I can have a conversation so she can also give me history of these projects, and we have money in the economic development fund, or we might have to be waiting to create the new fund that we're talking about.
If, if in fact, the, the geotechnical report for the Glass Farm, the expansion of that were not to come out of the affordable housing line, it would have to come out of professional services line, either council's professional services line or my administration professional services line, which would require an additional appropriation of probably the twenty thousand to do that. I mean, it, it is a professional service. That's where we took it from when we did the original core drillings to find the water table. So it can clearly fall under that.
And, and the Housing Advisory Board is recommending that council approve this, not, not just more soil borings, but a detailed study of-
Hydrological, sorry.
Well, no, several, have a civil engineer, have a civil engineering firm look at the site, request any needed soil borings, any other geotechnical hydrological studies that need to be done, so that then they can say, "These are the areas where there could be houses. These are the areas where the utilities should be. These are the areas for the stormwater retention." And also study, if we were to do apartments on that site, what would have to be done in order to do that? We have to look at the trade-off. Is it worth it to put bigger buildings on that site, given that it might need more work to support those buildings?
So, let me propose, first of all, the ones that I think are easy. So I think the Glass Farm Management, you know, group. I would like that to come out of the commission budget.
Yes, that's cool.
And, you know, because that is a subset of environmental commission. And then, I had mentioned before that I thought the update of the plan should come out of our economic development fund. That, to me, seems, you know, directly in line with, you know, what we're doing there.
You have it separate.
It's under the general fund in the planning and zoning, the thirty thousand for the comprehensive plans.
So I, I guess I want us to consider that that's a, a good investment of our economic development fund. So, I mean, I definitely agree that it's something that we need to do. And I think that's a logical place to attribute it to. But I don't know if there are other thoughts, Judith?
Just in terms of process, we're talking about now two or three different things. And I feel like we should get all the proposals. I know Lisa's got one, you know, for, that we get them all on the table. We know what they are, and then that people make a motion, and then make people speak to it. And in terms of, I was going to say, sort of a practical question, what fund it comes out of and so on. I mean, if it's coming out of an already established fund, that's something to talk about. But this thing about where would the money, if we go ahead and do the funding for the homing project, where that comes from, I think is a discussion we don't need to have here. Staff needs to recommend to staff, council, where we come from. I like, I was thinking, why don't we, rather than getting into discussions about particular proposals that Mary Ann's made, let's get all the proposals on the table first, and then make motions and discuss each one separately? Some of them may not need much discussion at all, but I just think we need to take a vote. We should take a vote. We shouldn't just each be saying we're for this or not for this, or whatever. I think it would be cleaner, if that makes sense?
I'm okay with that. I mean, I, to me, I think some of the ones that we're all in agreement on, I'd like to get out of the way, but it, but it's fine.
And that's fine, and I can see, shouldn't we do a vote, though, rather than just saying?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, but, but I'm okay with putting other things on the table that are out there. So Lisa, you were referenced.
Yeah, I provided an updated request for the professional services budget for the Police Department organizational assessment. And I'm not seeing it in the packet.
It was in the budget packet.
Oh, it's in that budget packet?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know why I didn't see it. So I made revisions to that after conversations with the council to clarify. Judith had concerns that this was somehow a competitive move as an alternate to the Justice Commission. That was some concern. I want to reinforce, this is absolutely not an instead-of request for either the commission or for the previously made proposal that I brought for a citizen advisory group. This is a totally separate proposal for a potential up to thirty thousand dollars. I don't know what the consulting costs might be for something like this. But the way the process kind of unfolded is when we had the separate meeting to look at budget, Patty sent out a request and said, "If anybody has an additional request for budget that you might anticipate, like, this is the time to do it." So this was pulled together quite quickly, and then has been expanded to add clarity. I worked on this proposal with Mary Ann. And the idea is, I think tonight maybe reinforced even the need to have some outside professional support to do an assessment of what's going on with policing, both around resources, to have greater confidence that the Police Department budget is right-sized, to have some look at policies, procedures, and practices around hiring, development, and day-to-day activities of the Police Department, to look at the Police Department effectiveness and alignment with guidelines for village policy, guidelines with policing. So, for example, changing the policing culture, and examining the extent to which the police are functioning in line with the guidelines, values, and policies that have been developed in the village, to, to step into some impactful police-community engagement, to develop more positive relationships and trust between the villagers and the Y.S.P.D. And this is something that's come up in today's meeting already a number of times. So my intention of bringing this proposal was to earmark some money that would be there at some point in the year once the commission and the council decide that this may or may not be necessary. When we developed it, we did not intend it to define the specifics of a consulting proposal, but instead, just to make the case for a budget set aside in anticipation of work later in 2019. Of course, council would want to be very clear about the purposes of engaging professional services. I amended the document with Mary Ann to say that the Justice System Commission would be likely to take the lead on this work, and that both the council, as well as the P.D., would be involved in the selection and planning process for this work. So that's why this is in here.
Okay. Are there any other proposals that we should mention? I just have a few things, but I, I guess this is where I think, I mean, some of these are really just clarifications. So there's the legal fees that I know there were some changes on. So I guess what I can specifically say to that is, my proposal there is that we budget for our retainer, which totals fifty-seven thousand a year. And we also budget for, and I saw this reflected, an additional thirty thousand for other legal things that come up. And my understanding was, Colleen, the number that we had budgeted was, before, was a hundred and seventy-one thousand?
I believe. And we took it out of, the Police Department actually had their own legal expense line and several little amounts in some of the other enterprise funds. So now they are just in the three. The new one is the mayor, fifteen thousand in case you get a prosecutor for court, and that can be later in the year. Then the sixty thousand in the manager's budget for the-
Retainer.
The retainer. And then thirty thousand in council's for any above that would be approved.
We, we, Colleen and I discussed it, and we thought that would be a really clear way to keep it separated. Because anything that's outside the retainer would then be a discussion with the president of council to determine that something can be outside the retainer.
Or, as we've talked about, is we have special projects.
Right.
We need to think about the legal budget for that as well. So, I mean, ultimately, this means cutting the legal services budget almost in half, which I think is, it's really important for us to be more, to monitor this carefully. And then remember, we have different options, like PEP is a possibility. What does PEP stand for?
PEP stands for the Public Entities Pool. It's our liability insurance company. And if something proceeds to litigation, excuse me, it gets referred to PEP, and there's a five-thousand-dollar deductible, and you're done. It's not a continuing legal fee.
So, you know, we could start to make decisions about how we keep ourselves within that budget as things come up, or hopefully not. Yes?
I mean, I know you mentioned to me that the expectation, Chris being here at every meeting, that actually expectations of Chris are going to change, because of course, you know, for budget, we don't expect him to be here as available as he has been. And, and then the second thing I did want to say is, I think there is, it is important that in the retainer is the ability for every council member, obviously, we shouldn't, you know, we shouldn't be calling him all the time. If there's any kind of, that's something that when I first came on the council, it was made clear to me that there does need to be the ability, though I think, you know, maybe contacting our president to say, "I've got a question here," that there is an ability for council to get the legal advice, because we are held equally responsible, that we can do that. And so that would be, I would like to see that be part in the retainer, you know, that, that that would be. I see Chris taking that.
Right. And Patty also, you know, when she referred to council president, I mean, the idea there was, if there was an emergency, that, you know, we have a process for that. But my expectation is that we should be able to talk about any, you know, additional legal fees before we make those decisions. But I do want to reiterate that fairness is important here. And I know how many hours you guys put in, Chris, and we want to balance that as well, right? So we want to think about, I mean, I think the first thing is, we got to tackle budget, right? And then we can, you know, work out some of the issues about what the retainer, how that transitions.
If I could add one thing to that point? I think that the discussions that we've had, that we can certainly manage the legal side of things through a project management system that we've discussed. And I think that that will help at a couple of different levels. One, because then it will help- One, because then it will help council manage its agenda as well, because there's a financial implication to that. Sometimes I think we've charged forward with an aggressive agenda, and we kind of get down a path and things go fast, and so I think it's a good thing.
Yep. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
The other thing that strikes me is that there are, we're going to legal counsel around our utilities, frequently enough, are we not? And I'm not sure, was that coming out of utility budgets, or was it coming out of the?
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand.
You know, if there's, you know, when we're doing contracts, say, you say electric contracts, are those coming out of our, are they coming out of our?
Are you talking about the power contracts?
I'm just saying, you know, when we have to involve our, our legal counsel on an issue like electric, our electricity contracts.
Well, it depends on the issue. If they're, if you're talking about the power contracts that we have with AMP, those are done, Chris may review those, but we haven't signed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, they're normally specialized. The solar array, when we did the solar array contract with AEP, that, we hired another firm because it's a specialized thing. So that would have come out of the $30,000, so.
So then the second, I guess, proposal came out of our discussion about right-sizing our funds, particularly with the electric fund. And again, that was reflected in the new documents, so I appreciate that there was some good thought around that. The main thing being, and Judith mentioned this a while back, and I think it's a really important point, that, you know, when we think about how we operate as a government, we're not, we don't want to be sitting on funds, you know, forever, right? We want to spend current taxpayer dollars on current projects. And so, to that point, I asked, you know, based on what Colleen told us about that fund needing 1.5-ish million, that the additional 1.1 million should be either put into a capital improvement fund, if we're gonna be doing those projects in the next five years. Or, you know, we had potentially talked about other things, like softening the blow on the general fund by, you know, taking the full cost of the Bobcat and that sort of thing out of that. And Colleen, maybe you can just tell us what you guys ended up proposing in this budget to reallocate that?
For the fund balances on the enterprise accounts, the water sewer and electric, we did keep it a little over our four-month minimum. And the rest, we moved into the capital funds that associate with the enterprise fund. So the electric enterprise fund's balance is moving into the electric capital improvement. And so is water, and so is sewer. So that will stay in there for those future projects without making transfers.
And, and I do just want to reiterate that, before we bring the final budget back to council, I do want to do one last check with Johnny Burns, the public work superintendent, to make sure that he is comfortable with moving all of those over there. I don't see why he wouldn't be, but, you know, there may, he may want to, instead of moving a million over, he may want to move 750,000 or 850,000, just, you know, in case something catastrophic happens. Because the thing you have to remember is, once you move it to the capital fund, you cannot move it back to the operating fund. Once it's there, it's there. So if something happens and you don't have the money in the operating fund, it has to come from somewhere else. So always keep that in mind.
I'm being conservative about that.
Yeah, I mean, because you can't, you can move it over to the capital, but you can't move it from the capital back to the operating.
Thank you. That's a really important clarification, because I've been very pro having that, the money set aside in the capital fund, primarily because I think that without it being allocated that way, it sends a false sense of wealth, if you will, when we know that we have these really major capital expenses coming up. But that's a really important point. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't move some of those balances over there. And I'm certainly not saying that we don't have projects that we can allocate them to. I'm just saying, just keep that in mind when we're making these transfers from operating to capital, that it can't come back. It's like, you can move from general fund to anywhere else, but you cannot move out of the enterprise into the general fund. It's the similar thing. If you move it into capital, it's in capital.
Right. Which is why we have, you know, I think we're already conservative about our budget balances. So, so then the other thing that I want to make sure in that final iteration is that we are also thinking about this sort of current taxpayer dollars being spent on current capital projects that are gonna benefit our citizens right now. So, you know, to that degree, you know, we talked about the buyout of the solar field, which is 10 years down the line. I think it's great to know that that's on our radar, but, you know, we do need to keep in mind that there is profit that comes back into the fund, you know, and that is budgeted for, for future maintenance. So I just want to make sure we're, you know, thinking about that balance. Okay. So the affordable housing fund, I'll hold off on that, because I think that's a different discussion. And then the last thing I wanted to reiterate is, I'll just put it under the theme of having skin in the game. And we identified a couple maintenance needs where, you know, I think to justify our support, we need those organizations to also be involved in supporting that. One of those is John Bryan Community Pottery, where we're looking at $36,500 over the next two years. And to what we have put forward is putting in the budget that half of that will come through some kind of revenue. So whether they are doing a capital campaign, or they're looking for donors to keep that space. Otherwise, I think to be responsible, we need to think about potentially repurposing that space. I think we do want to take care of all of our buildings, but we also have to be responsible around that.
Can I ask you then about that? What, what are you proposing in terms of our relationship with them?
So I talked to Roger Reynolds, who's on the board, and I think they, the impression I got was that they understood, you know, where we're coming from, because we do have a very tight budget. And, you know, again, it would be great if we could support, you know, the Yellow Springs Arts Council with their rent, you know, over on Corey Street and that sort of thing, but we've got to balance that. So I think they understand that, and they're gonna be talking internally about what they can do. The other one that I thought we needed to think about are the ball fields. And I can't remember exactly, there's, there's something around $12,000, maybe over the next couple of years in maintenance. I love supporting the ball fields, but again, I think that that is a group that needs to think about how they can contribute to support.
Have we been getting income from the teams?
We get income from the softball teams, but I think there are other teams that use those fields that don't pay to use the fields.
And, you know, folks have talked about even like, you know, every game having, you know, a can and just saying, hey, support the ball fields. You know, I think it's great to improve the dugouts and do those kinds of things, but, you know, some of these, and I will contrast it with the library, all right? I think our support of the library makes a lot of sense, because it is a community-wide asset. But even with the library, they are, you know, supporting basically 50-50, right? With those improvements. So, so anyway, so those are two things that have been reflected in this budget. And I think we should start by earmarking and expecting some revenue and support. And then we will see what happens over this next year with some of those things. So those were my budget recommendations, I guess. So, so what should we, so we got a few ones to tackle, I think.
So of the non-controversial, you think everybody's on board, I mean, you want to make a motion on the ones that you've recommended? And we've kind of been all shaking our heads.
Sure. I think that's a good, I think that's a good start. So I talked about the legal services budget, the electric fund, and the John Bryan Community Pottery and the ball field. So can I get a motion to support those recommendations?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
I'm sure that was the real motion.
Yeah, all right. So I was the fir, I was the first.
Okay.
Okay.
But I felt like there wasn't a sense of where we would end up in terms of the, oh, I'm sorry, I was, okay, go.
Right.
Legal fund, ball field.
John Bryan Community Pottery and the electric. But again, what we got was that, just that we're recommending to move, to reduce the surplus and move it to capital.
But we're going to be conservative in doing that, knowing that we want to keep enough in operation. So if something unexpected happens, it's there, because once it's in capital, it's not coming back.
Right, right.
So the motion, the motion isn't for a specific amount? Because we're pending input from Johnny Burns.
Exactly, right. So we, I mean, I think it's direction to do those with the final budget that we get at the next meeting.
Yes.
So I have a quick question, too, because prior to this, I heard all three of the enterprise funds moving the, a little bit of surplus over to the capital.
I love that you're doing that. I mean, I think that's great.
And it's in this, so am I taking it back out, or we're putting? When you say electric, are you saying electric water and sewer?
I mean, that was the one that I thought was, you know, most.
It has the most, yes.
Don't usually talk about love in terms of.
Well, but that's a way to get people excited. So I want to change the tone. But I think, unless we disagree, that there's consensus around this right-sizing our budget. So I think it's a good thing to do with any recommendations about, you know, emergencies. Okay.
That's good.
So then, shall we talk about the housing?
Are we voting on that, first one? Are we?
It's a handshake, I think.
It was a handshake, okay.
Yeah, head shake, yeah. Okay, we're good. Okay.
We're sleepy, and we're just.
No, we're not sleepy.
Only you, Kevin.
That's right.
I'm not sleepy.
Okay, so we're talking about housing, and I will just comment that I think it's a good idea for us to still move forward with an affordable housing budget line. And I even saw in your proposal, Mary Ann, that you indicated that, I think you said you were supportive of that. So I guess I, but I, so I, I want to move forward with that, but then we also have to talk about the other, you know, specifics. But I guess to me, establishing the budget line is a good thing to do, because there's a legal process. And then we can always figure out later if we're appropriating funds to that budget line.
I second that.
Okay. So all those in favor of affordable budget line?
Yes.
Affordable housing.
I'm abstaining.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think we're actually ready to do that.
Okay.
And I'd rather wait until we've decided exactly how that will be used. I think it's more important to say we're gonna put money into an affordable housing project.
We're gonna have to counter each other.
Yeah, right.
No, I don't say that you can, you can establish the line and not put any funds into it. But then a line is there when you're ready to put something into it.
Yeah, okay. I'm still gonna abstain, because I think it would be better to wait until we've really worked out the details. But I'm not, certainly not gonna vote against it. That's why I'm abstaining.
Okay. So it sounds like we're gonna move forward with that.
Yeah, that was a four.
Yeah, I'm four and abstaining. So then, okay, so we have the request for $20,000 for the surveying that needs to be done to get the glass farm ready for developing housing. I certainly support that. I don't know if we.
And there was a fund, a specific fund named from which to take that, right?
You can take it from professional services, either in my professional services line or the council's professional services.
Right now, it's listed under incentives, I think, isn't it?
The glass farm wasn't listed at all.
Why don't somebody?
Yeah, it is. The $81,000.
It's.
That's in the economic development fund.
Economic development.
But it wasn't specific for the glass farm. That was just the balance of the fund balance available.
But I understood you were saying it would come from that fund.
I think Brian actually said that, or no, that was planning commission.
Oh, well.
I apologize.
So where should it come from?
Well, it was my understanding that the 50, that would come from the $50,000 that was being moved out from the green space fund. That would, part of that would be used for this purpose.
That would go into professional services.
It could, yes. I mean, if, yes, at this point, you can go ahead and put it into the professional services line. And Colleen can make a note in the appropriations that it's earmarked for that.
And we don't have to decide which professional services, whether it's council or manager?
It'll be, it'll be.
It's simpler just to put it in mine, if you ask me, because I can make the appropriation.
Yes, because you're gonna be doing the hiring of the.
Okay.
And, and I'm fine with where it comes from. I mean, I, you know, I do think that if we're doing any amount of affordable housing, it can come out of an affordable housing fund, but I don't think we need to quibble about that. So I think that's good.
And what, what amount was that?
$20,000, Glass Farm.
So, Colleen, that goes into my professional services.
Do you want a motion vote on that, or is that a general, we're all good?
Yeah, I think we're all good. And, you know, keeping in mind that we will be voting on the budget, you know, we'll see it all at our next two meetings, right? So a lot of this is just kind of direction for what we want to see in that final document. Okay, so now we've got the request to support the Glenn Cottage's program, in, project. I think one thing to highlight is, and it was made clear in the letter, is that it's important for leveraging funds to get a commitment as soon as possible for 2020, not just 2019, but, you know, it's looking at those two years. So I think that's, just to clarify, it occurs to me that if we're, you know, the request resonates, that the way to deliver on that is to think about both years. So any discussion about that?
Why don't we make this a motion and kind of be more, a little more? I'm just thinking we should take a vote, help, if we need to have any further conversation, so. If there's any comments.
So have a motion and a second, and then the discussion.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we reserve $30,000 in the 2019 budget and $30,000 in the 2000, and commit to 2000 and the 2000, excuse me, and commit to $30,000 in the 2020 budget for the Glenn Cottage development.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Lisa?
I have some comments, but first I just have a question. That's kind of an accounting question, maybe. So if we establish the affordable housing line item, and then we move a certain amount of money into that, could this money be allocated in that, and that way we know that we already have the budget there if we make a commitment to monies in 2020? How does that work in our budget to do this year and next year allocation of budget?
If it's a new fund, I can't put it in this budget. It won't make the timeframe by the time we get approval back, get the legislation, get approval back from the auditors. It'll go in as a supplemental for next year. If it's just a line item in an already established fund, if it qualifies underneath the economic development fund, as an example, or a general fund, then yes, we can put that amount in. And again, if that's not established by the end of this budget, we can add that to 2019.
And then it just carries over then, unallocated for 2020?
No, we resubmit for 2020. You just have to remember that you want to put that in again. We only appropriate what we're going to spend in the current year.
Well, I'm assuming we have to give a letter to the applicant saying there's a commitment for the building.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. How do we make that?
And then that will go in the next budget.
We just make that commitment now, and then they use that in their application, and then next year, it's, we make commitments, so it's.
I would just like to point out to council, I understand this is a very important discussion, and affordable housing is very important. I caution you, as tight as the budget is this year, and as tight as the budget is projected to be next year, that is something that you really need to think about when you're making a two-year commitment. Okay? It's, it's, it's gonna be even tighter next year than it is this year. So you just need to be very aware of that when you're making this commitment. This is a lot of money. I'm not saying you shouldn't do it. I'm not saying you should do it. I'm just pointing out to you how tight the budget is.
I guess I want to comment that it's, it's taken me, I know, a little time to get up to speed in understanding the economic development impact of this kind of development. in understanding the economic development impact of this kind of development. It is going to help us pay for the, you know, the services and the infrastructure improvements we need to. So I think if the village has to flex in terms of its plans, you know, relative to that tight budget, in order to take advantage of these opportunities, that's what the village should be thinking about. Obviously, you can't stretch too thin to do that, but I think this has to be a very high, high, high priority. And it's sort of very, you know, it's like, I'm not saying anybody's doing this, but we don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish and we need to think about. And so I just think it's really important to take advantage of these opportunities. It's taken me a while to really understand it all, but the kind of monies that Home Inc. has been able to bring into the village with this, with the village making clear its commitment and is putting, making this, you know, that the village is willing to put money, you know, to these projects, I mean, to not take advantage of that, I think would be a huge mistake.
Well, I agree and I think that was very well said. And I think when we consider our goals and the whole swath of things that we say we want to do and consider housing alone, there's a continuum of things that we could do. You know, and I guess, you know, there's some folks who, you know, have issues, we shouldn't do so much for Home Inc. Well, it's not really about Home Inc., it's about us. It's about the village, it's about council, and are we willing to do something to help realize our goals? You know, if Bob the Builder was offering something, maybe we'd give him the money. But, you know, so, you know, we don't have, as was said earlier, we don't have multiple community development corporations doing the kind of things that Home Inc. is doing. We don't have multiple developers doing the kind of things that Home Inc. is doing. So again, it's just about us and what we want to do for the residents and for our future. And we would like to think of Home Inc. as one of the many partners that we'll have in trying to realize those goals.
Yeah, I've also been very influenced by discussions with community members and differentiating between this word donations versus a partnership action. I don't see that our council or the village is going to be able to move within the next couple of years on any kind of other project. I mean, I, I think that it was one of our, it's one of our key values. It was certainly something that was really important to me when I considered coming on council. And, you know, I, I have been very focused on utilities for some reason. I don't know how that happened to me, but I have become passionate about utilities. And, you know, so I realize this has been one of the most difficult times for me personally on council because I'm realizing the interaction of all this very complicated elements of the budget and particularly on what's underneath our streets and that we have a lot of work to do and it's going to cost a lot of money. And if we don't invest in that, it will be our whole village that will suffer as a result. So originally, I was very, very concerned about this request and really thought that instead we had to focus more on this very tight budget. But after a lot of consideration and conversations and also getting really clear on what project it is we're talking about, because I think there is confusion in the community between the different Home Inc. projects that are being discussed and for which project, you know, are we talking about right now. So after a lot of, a lot of consideration, I think it's very important that we, that we support this on our budget because I think it's the only momentum that we have right now to develop more affordable housing in the village.
What I want to emphasize that's really important to me about this kind of decision is formalizing this partnership. And I know that work is being done on that and it's, it's very important to me that we understand that Home Inc. is not a special interest. It's not, you know, one of the many nonprofits that we're, you know, just making a choice to support, but that Home Inc. is providing capacity to the village. And, you know, so I guess tied to my decision on this, because we will make the decision in our next two meetings, is that we are making real progress towards formalizing that partnership so that we really are, that Home Inc. is an NGO, all right? And that is something that we really value. We've seen that, you know, with the partnership we have with the Chamber, with Tecumseh Land Trust. And so I want to make sure that we move out of the special interest zone and into understanding that there's, there's a real partnership here to move forward these goals. So, all right, so I think it sounds like we're ready to take a vote on this. All those in favor of including this in the budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't hear any opposed. Okay, so then the, is the last thing, talking about the?
Professional services.
Okay, yes, thank you. And then the planning commission, yep.
Yeah, I move that we set aside 30K for 2019 for potential professional services to do an assessment of the Yellow Springs Police Department.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it. I mean, you know, we've heard in this council meeting and we've heard other places about issue of trust or more like lack of trust that some portions of our community have with the police department. And we, and the Justice System Task Force has been working on this, the police department has been working on this, and I'm not sure how much has changed, nor do I think it can change overnight. But I think one of the things that I would want to see out of some outside consulting group would be help with looking at what are the kind of things, what are the changes that could be made that could create a better relationship between the police and the, particularly the parts of our population, young people, people of color, what, whomever the groups are that experience both a lack of trust and a sense that they're being victimized by the police, how that, how we can shift that. And I think having an outside, someone from the outside perhaps could help with that.
Judith?
Last time I was pretty skeptical of the proposal, as you know, but I've come to, and I, I'm thinking it partly came out of a conversation Lisa and I have had with Vaughn Crandall, who's, F. Crandall, who lives here in town. Her son grew up in Yellow Springs. He works with a, an organization that works with various departments out in California. He's quite knowledgeable, very helpful. We've had conversations on the phone. He's given a lot to the village, to his time and expertise. So I think this makes some kind of sense. I think there's a, but I, I do want to say because we've, we've said the new commission will be doing a look back and we want to kind of, so I, I'm just not sure this year it would be gotten to is kind of my feeling. There's, there's a fair amount of sort of making sure the things we already did, that we have the measuring tools to know if it's doing what we want it to be doing. So I guess I, I would feel, you know, open to including this as long as it doesn't give us a sense of urgency if we're not really ready. Actually, I feel the same way about the prosecutor monies.
Yeah.
So that, so that, so that if we don't get to it this year, that there's no sense that we have to, because I think we, we want to solidify the progress we've made.
I agree. I totally agree.
And so that's, that's my only caution.
So to speak to that, I mean, there was no date on this.
Yeah.
But if it's not in the budget, it's not in the budget. And I, part of my thinking about the strong support for the commission for accelerating the citizen advisory and for bringing this, these are my signs to the council that we cannot wait and, and so we need to work with a sense of urgency. If we don't get to it this year, okay, but I, I think that the events of this meeting tonight support my claim that we, we must move with a sense of urgency around this issue of community police trust, the cost of policing, what the product that we're getting for that cost. I think there's a sense of urgency. So that's why I brought it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I'm not going to oppose keeping it in the budget, but, you know, I guess I do want to flag that we can always, when things come up, we can always add them to the budget, right? So we're not, we're not restricted from doing that. But it's very clear that spending any money on consulting, we have to look at very carefully, which is going to relate to my recommendation with the village manager search, which we'll get to in a minute. So any other comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, last thing I think is where we're taking the comp plan money from. So I had mentioned that I recommend that it comes out of the economic development fund. Are there any other thoughts with that?
So that's going to be 30,000 out of 81,000?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, that fund has been sitting there for, since I've been on council. So I think it makes sense to use it to tee that up. Okay, so I'll make a motion to take that out of the economic development fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Susan, and I'm sorry, you wanted to say something about affordable, have we covered it?
I wanted to say it when you come to that area.
Okay, so we kind of did, so do you?
I may or may not have anything to say because I'm going to pretty much be supporting what you want.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, anything else about Emily? You wanted to make a comment?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. All right. Colleen, thank you for amazing work on this.
Yes, thank you.
Colleen, thank you.
I know we have run you, put you through the wringer. And, and this is how you know that somebody's going to stick. So thank you, Colleen.
She's going to be pretty hard to scare off, but you could go home now. Yes, you've had a long day.
I'm Emily Seibel, Executive Director of Yellow Springs Home Inc., and I wanted to say thank you, but also I know it's not going to be in the budget for next year, but we are a member of the Ohio Community Development Finance Fund and they issue pre-development grants. And so one of the things we've already committed to as an organization is seeing if we can help the village get some funds to do some of that civil engineering on the glass farms. So we'll be approaching you about that next year.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else before we move into old business? All right, and we're going to get through these items pretty quickly, I think. Lisa, you want to just do a real quick update on the Designated Community Improvement Corporation?
Sure, let me talk while I scan that out of this Excel. So this is the first time we've talked for a little bit about the Designated Community Investment Corporation, also known as a DCIC. It's a type of nonprofit that can help us with collaborative strategic planning among important entities in the community and support economic development in Yellow Springs. We've been very focused on the possibility that the DCIC can be a coordinating and planning entity that could fund and oversight projects that ensure economic and cultural vitality of the village, both businesses, nonprofits, residential and infrastructure development. We have had in the past month, month and a half, a series of conversations with potential membership. This included the township, the Chamber of Commerce, the college, the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. We still haven't had a conversation with the schools, but we intend to and this has been on their radar because we have ex officio representation of someone from the school board in the Economic Sustainability Commission. So this is not something that's a surprise to anybody. In addition to those stakeholders, we're also imagining that there would be four at-large members from business and nonprofit organizations that support the economic and community development or bring some sort of skills and expertise to bear on the success of the corporation. We've talked about some possible tasks for the Yellow Springs DCIC. First and foremost, we understand that this would help us with our revolving loan fund. It's needed a home and so that would be certainly a first step for the DCIC. We could also think about investing in infrastructure projects, providing assistance to advance civic economic and community development of Yellow Springs, helping to fund residential and commercial development. We've talked about a land bank. DCICs are able to apply for grants, so that would be a good mechanism as well. Where we are now, our hope is that even though December is a really busy month for everybody, we hope to convene a meeting of the potential DCIC members to have a group conversation about the work that the DCIC might do and have some joint ideas. We've been having, Brian and I have been having one-on-one meetings with the different stakeholders. It's all been received very positively. We know that when we bring this group together, there's an opportunity for ideas that maybe we haven't thought of and synergies. And so that's why this is really such an important opportunity for the village. And we've heard from the community, you know, in this recent history, when we've had these multiple levies, you know, for the water plant and then the fire station and then the school levy and then the utilities all went up and it's like, oh my gosh, oh, right? And, and the community, we heard from the community about this. And what we know is that everybody, these entities all have assets, but if everyone is just in their own silo rolling along, we're not going to be able to optimize what we can do for the community and the village as much as if we came together around a table for joint strategic planning. This doesn't mean that the village or any of the other participants would have to act the way, would have to do something that the DCIC told them to do. But it creates an opportunity to bring ideas, bring timelines, talk about them, talk about how they fit together and the potential impact on the community, good or bad. So our goal is to try to get the group together in December and at the same time move very quickly on filing the 501(c)(3) application because it isn't until that happens that we're formally a DCIC and can begin to complete transactions and do business. So we're moving as quickly as possible and I'm sure Brian has something to add, perhaps more articulate than I am, but I'm really excited about the opportunity to coordinate and collaborate more broadly across these important entities in the village.
Yeah, I think you articulated it very well. I'll just emphasize again that we look at this as a resource, again, adding capacity to move forward with economic development, to do a better job, provide a forum of coordinating a lot of these things, to basically think about how we can support our community as a whole. And I think the other thing I want to emphasize is that the village has teed this up, but we want this to be genuinely collaborative. So the purpose and how this group morphs is something that we want to be a part of, but we want to let that happen in the way that it should so that all those stakeholders are, have a lot of buy-in because at the end of the day, if everybody's not bringing their A-game, this is not going to affect change. So that is critical to us.
One, one more thing I want to say, if you look at the material in the packet, you'll see that we're starting to accumulate vision and mission statements in, in the back of the, of the document. And that's because. And that's because we're interested in understanding the alignments of mission, vision, and values for all of the stakeholders and to focus on areas where we have agreement and try to optimize on those. So that's why we're carrying those in the back of the document as an appendix, in case you're wondering why those are there.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
I have a question.
So, yes, I agree, you were very articulate.
I have questions about membership. First of all, do you actually have named members from each of the entities? And secondly, how, from what I've read, I think the idea of not less than two-fifth being elected officials is a pretty stringent requirement.
Has to be a minimum of forty percent.
Right, minimum of forty.
So when you go to eleven people and you only have four...
It's a minimum. So you can have more elected officials than forty percent?
I think what he's saying is you're going to have to.
You're going to have to have more than four.
If you have eleven people, you'll have to have more than four elected officials.
No, we're thinking about if we've got four electeds.
And seven.
We need a body of ten.
Right, okay.
Right, but eleven then puts us more than that, right?
Now, eleven means you don't have enough elected officials.
Forty percent is a minimum.
So if there was eleven, there would have to be five.
Yeah, you think you're going to have less than forty percent.
Not if you don't make five people.
So as it is described right now, you can only go there.
Well, I'm sure you can figure it out.
We promise to figure it out, we'll be legal. Yeah, but to your first question, no, we do not have named people. I mean, we think that it's important that the entities, as Kevin, sorry, Brian said, you know, bring their A-game, but that's going to be up to the participants.
Okay.
Because we're not in charge, you know, we're a part of the collective.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Village Manager search. So I, there's a document on the table, I will just highlight a few things and see if there are any questions. Judy shared with all of council members the five responses we got to our request for qualification. After sitting down and talking with Patty and Judy in depth, I am not convinced that that will be money well spent for what we're looking for. So what I've embodied in this outline is what I think we do need support with, and I got assurances from Patty and Judy that other things could be handled by the village team. So one thing I think we need help with is graphic design to finalize our, you know, sort of position, statements, and, you know, things about the community. And I think we should use a local graphic designer to do that. We have several that would do a great job. The second thing we thought we needed some capacity on...
Susan, who would decide? Who would do that? Should we, would we have?
Um, I think it's within Patty's budget, so...
It better be.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're, so I think...
I mean, it's budgeted for under council's budget, I've dropped.
Right, right.
I think you've already said okay to those funds, so, and that can move to Patty's budget.
Well, I'll just spend it out of your line, I do that anyway. I just want to make clear that I did say that village staff can handle a lot of these things, but that other things may have to wait. I just want to be clear that the plates are full.
Right.
We'll make it happen.
Okay. Well, what you'll see if you look at this outline is most of it falls on council shoulders, which was kind of reflected by some of the divvying up of tasks. So the other thing that we realize that we need support on is doing background checks. One of the things that we've learned from the past is a good social media check is important. And so we thought that would be, you know, something that we could, you know, again, contract specifically to have somebody support doing that. As we get to, you know, the finalists, a more, you know, I guess, in-depth background check would certainly make sense. But if you look at this, most of it, under my recommendation, is I think about council vetting the applicants that we get and making our own decisions about who should be those finalists. And I partly say that from, you know, going through the prior Village Manager search where the result was great, but the finalists that we got overall, maybe we missed some gems that we should have been considering. And it was Lori Askland that highlighted that council really needs to be involved in looking at, you know, what we want out of those candidates. So those are my, like, overall thoughts just about consultant. If people have different thoughts, you know, please raise those. And then otherwise, this is a timeline that gets us where I think Patty recommended to make sure that we have enough time for them to give notice and do their onboarding. Judy?
The deadline for applications is in the next, you know, on February eleventh, first round of reviewing applicants by council to narrow the pool. You can't narrow the pool without already getting some significant, you know, getting good information about the candidates, about how they function in prior jobs. It needs to be not from just their own, you know, application and their people that they give as references. It's got to go deeper than that, and to me, we will need help with that.
Well, I know in my case that two council members called some of my former council members and spoke directly to them.
Okay, so I was going to say, before people start narrowing the pool, you need that information. I mean, so, but to, so you're saying the council did it?
I know Mary Ann made some calls, I think Brian made some calls as well.
Well, it's just, yeah, I mean, nobody, you need that before you can think about narrowing your pool, for sure.
Well, I think, you know, that's a fair comment, which is some of the process still needs to be refined, you know, when we assign those tasks. But, you know, we know that we need to get the notice out soon.
Right, so before narrowing the pool, broadening the pool is my concern in terms of reaching out to making sure that we reach out to diverse communities. And I think as the RFP suggested, non-traditional applicants. So I don't know if we need help with that or if we have access to appropriate resources to ensure that we're being effective in that effort.
We think we have a pretty good start, but one of the things I mentioned with the week of January seventh is that's a good time for us to assess if we need to step it up. So I think with all of this, you know, we need to be monitoring the process to think about, is there more that we could do? So for example, an idea was mentioned, should we make a video to promote this position, which I'm open to thinking about, all right? And in fact, somebody...
It's not time to do a good video.
And somebody suggested that we should get one of our famous residents to boost it, which maybe more than we want.
These photobomb people are doing.
So, but anyway, so I think...
Are you watching out there? We need you.
But I think, yeah, this definitely, we've got to be, you know, evaluating along the way. But I am personally not convinced that investing fifteen thousand or more for a full-on consultant, which is what we got back, is going to get us what we want, so...
So this is a pretty rough outline, as far as I'm concerned. And I'd like to at least dig a little deeper into the first two things. So who is finalizing the position in the commu, who is doing that first step?
I think, was that assigned to Lisa and I? So I did not pull out the document where we assign these tasks.
Do you know what? Has any work been done on it?
Nope. But, but we've got...
Well, that's not true.
I mean, we've got a great statement from the last time, so it's all about the village, but...
Some background material.
Sure, I mean, you saw all those materials from the last search.
Okay, I just, so who, then, again, so you and Lisa are going to...
I believe, weren't we assigned to do the marketing, Lisa? Was that the...
Yes, we did talk about that.
Okay.
We did. It's a lot to accomplish by December third, obviously, but I think that the first two, in terms of timeline, if we can get together and get a little bit more granular, it seems to me that the call for community committee members, some of the, some of the talking points and messaging would do double service. So, yeah, we did talk about that.
I have total confidence in doing it.
I mean, I will say, if, you know, Jerry knows this because we work together, we had a citizen committee that worked for weeks on that community statement. So I doubt we're going to be able to add a lot more to that. And the position, I know we've got some new things that we're thinking about, that's why I particularly thought about December third, because I thought we should have a draft to talk about at council, to make sure we're on the same...
That would be good.
Yes, so, yeah, I would say that this...
And what about the position posting? I mean, who's going to do that? Where is it going to be posted? Who's going to figure all that out?
So Ruth Ann, Judy, Patty have been working on that. They've got a running list.
We have some input too from citizens that, with some expertise, that have made some recommendations.
Then if that could be sent to me so that I can...
I sent it in the wayback.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
And I would also maybe suggest, in the same way that you reached out the last, during the last search, to citizens to serve on the committee, that maybe the same outreach, say, contact Patty or me if you have good suggestions about where to reach out, for example, Antioch College alumni list, you know, just sort of suggestions that we might not come up with that we can gather.
Well, I was going to say, I had a chat with Kevin McGruder in the last few days about, you know, the diversity hiring practices that we're trying to pull together and, you know, that whole issue of where, you know, where we're reaching out and getting the notices out and stuff, and so, I mean, Kevin had some particular suggestions. In this instance, you know, we had to think about where the most relevant places will be, but keeping that also in the mix, not, you know, keeping that commitment in the mix.
Okay. Yeah, all right, great.
We want to hear from the new candidates for the...
Yes, we do, okay.
Our team.
And I will just, well, I will say also, this is a great test of your ability to remain articulate through many complex issues.
Well, this has been a particularly heavy meeting.
Yes, yeah.
Don't be discouraged.
Yeah, they're always like this.
Yes.
They're not always like that.
Well, can I get clarification before you do that? Is there going to be a motion to keep Judith on for another month or not? Because that is as serious a consideration as these people come up and give their presentations, whether that's going to occur or not occur. Just want to get clarity on that first, because you suggested it after the budget discussion.
Right, well, we had said we were going to put it under new business, I'm okay with moving it up to now, I don't necessarily think it makes a difference. Do you still want to oppose that or...
Okay, so I'd like to have a brief discussion with council about that. I think I stated that I'm reticent to have a new person come on council after the hours we spent on the budget to vote on, one. Two, I'm, I don't exactly, it feels odd to say, well, we don't want you to vote on. Those are the two reasons that I thought it made sense for Judith to stay on while we finalize the budget. No, I'd like to hear what the other council...
Well, certainly I can appreciate the value of Judith staying around for that. It is also possible, because whoever that new person is going to be is listening to us now, and they should have the idea that they might not be expected to have a full grasp of the budget and can certainly consider abstaining. But duly noted.
One, I mean, one of the things that I've been paying attention to is which of the candidates for council seem to be really tracking, you know, coming to meetings. Of course, we can't tell if people watch the videos, but, you know, running alongside is part of being a viable candidate for me and the readiness to jump in. So that is really complicated. When you first brought it up earlier, I thought, wow, that's a good idea, but then now that we've resolved so many, I think, of those big questions about the budget, I'm not sure that we have a lot of anything controversial hanging out there anymore.
So the two of you are comfortable having someone come on and...
I think so.
And you?
I don't have a strong feeling, because I do, I do agree that that new person is going to respect, you know, the process that we've gone through, so, so, yeah.
Okay, let's move on. I won't push it.
Great. Okay, so, I just want to say if you...
The champagne pops.
Wow. All right, so first of all, I do want to say, Judith, I'm going to miss you a ton, but I know that you're still going to be in the mix. Judith and I, before we started working together on council, had some issues to work through, and we did that successfully, and it's really going to be hard to fill Judith's spot. But I will segue into saying, I'm very impressed with all six applicants that have come forward, and I want to emphasize that, you know, we've got a couple that are already on commissions and involved in local government. I hope that anybody else that's not selected will choose to do the same. And I think the other thing I want to clarify, because I made a point of clarifying with Diane, I did not say that the person had to be young to fill this position. I said we had an opportunity to engage younger folks that feel disenfranchised, but that does not mean it has to be a young person. So I just want to be clear that I would never say something like that, because I'm always listening to everything. So my decision is not biased in that way at all, but I do want to make it clear that we've got some opportunities here. So with that, the way we're going to do this is Judy is going to randomly select names.
Randomly.
And we have asked everyone to make a statement for three minutes. We will have a few other items to finish up before we go into executive session, where we do not make a decision, we just have a discussion, and we will come back out and announce our decision. People do not need to wait around for that, but you are welcome to, and we will, we will be expedient, but we will also make sure that we are careful about our decision. So, Judy?
All right. Random shuffling of papers is occurring, you can't see it, but I swear it's really... They're all wadded up, actually, in little balls. Dan Reyes.
All right, Dan.
How are you guys doing tonight? Long meeting already?
Bring the mic up to your mouth a little.
Shall I adjust? Is that better?
Yeah, we've been hearing a lot of feedback from people who listen, that it's hard to hear sound people.
Yeah, then he has to hold it.
Juggling act.
That's better, thank you.
I'm starting you now, Dan.
Am I starting now?
Yeah, you're starting.
Okay, yeah, I know you asked one of us to keep this fairly brief. My name's Dan Reyes, and as you've already heard, I was thinking just to say a couple of things that maybe have already been included, but about myself, and then briefly a couple of things about current and ongoing priorities as I see them with council to maybe characterize my interest. And briefly with myself, I think there's something useful in my background as a college educator, and I work with a variety of different constituencies, teaching primarily with the University of Dayton these days. I've also worked with Antioch College and Antioch University, but also, I mean, both younger people and then professional communities as well. And beyond that, in my teaching, I focus quite a bit on the, I would say, social, political, and ethical dimensions of the idea of community, and doing some of that closer to practice, which is what I see the council doing, is attractive to me. Another, I think, relevant part of my background is in architecture and planning. Before coming to the village, before getting involved in higher education, I was a practicing architect, and I, I think, understanding the urban infrastructure is often an important backstory to decisions that the council is faced with making or weighing in on. So I think that's maybe a useful contribution. And then finally, I've tried to stay active with the civic community in the village while I've been here, and have been, I suppose when I can, I've come to village meetings. When I haven't, I've tried to follow the packets and the information that's on the table. And I have participated in committees ranging from design advisory, which is very open-ended, to Board of Zoning Appeals, which is one of the more structured... to Board of Zoning Appeals, which is one of the more structured occasions for committees. So I think I have some insight to the village. Besides that, though, I should start talking faster, I'm gathering from the look. I was thinking, in terms of these ongoing concerns with the village, I would identify guiding and incentivizing both ecological stewardship and smart growth as a kind of regular recurring occasion for the village. And to do that in some ways, I mean, sometimes that's direct, sometimes probably maybe even more often, it's indirect. But trying to do that in a way that makes sense with our resources, I know you guys are talking a lot about budget, which is a reality resource, but also the goals of the community, the benefits that are going to come back to this community. And I think it's also the justice system conversation, which is another long conversation, has been an interesting one. I guess I was attracted to something, just a little episode in that, that Ellis was introducing over the last couple of meetings, which I saw as a legislative inspiration of sorts. The rules about surveillance and his remarks about other communities already noticing before it's become law. But then the next challenge is administrative, right? That's an ongoing one. And I think that's the nature of justice and trust in a community. And then finally, the thing that is on the table, coming up real soon, is the personnel things that the village council does and the manager transition. And I would hope that I could be a smart participant with that as well, drawing on some background about understanding at least parts of the job. I don't understand everything that Patty does, but, or a manager does. But how a village works, I do understand some of that. So is that, was that little ringing thing my time?
Yeah, I was saying.
Everybody tries to ignore that.
Okay.
All right. Next up. Random selection is Gerald Sims.
Can you tell me when I can start? First of all, you know, I think it's a privilege when one comes forward and does community service. And having been there and done that, it's hard work. But it's the work that five people decided that they wanted to do, and the community elected those five. In this particular case, the five of you are going to elect that person to fill that seat. And yes, I would like to be that person. But if not, I will continue doing what I'm doing, serving on the Economic Sustainability Committee. I also, I was fairly active in church, and one of the things that I'm proud that we did is we teamed with another organization to provide a free clinic for the residents here in Yellow Springs. I'm probably the oldest candidate, and may be good and that may be bad, but I still also understand the process that we have to go through. And one of the most important ones is picking a village manager. And I have worked on picking a couple, some good, some bad.
What are you looking at me for when you say bad, Jerry?
It's a process. And being on council is a 24/7 job. And you've got to be willing to put the time in, and you have to have that time to put in. I'm completely retired. I have that time. And if I'm picked by you five, you will know that you'll get my full attention and my energy.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jerry.
Next up is Dino Palata.
Before I begin, I just want to say a couple things. Judith, apologize for what took place earlier, and I thank you for your service that you've done for us. We appreciate it. I'm Dino Palata. I'm a member of the Utility Resolution Board. I was a member of the Economic Sustainability Commission and the Community Resources, who assisted in getting the CBE land back in the village's hands, which eventually led to the development of Cresco. People have asked me, why are you willing to do this? In the 20 years of business, I believe there's a value of having a local businessperson represented on our council. I believe a blend of businesspeople along with residents would better round out our council in the decision-making process. Furthermore, I want to give back to the community that's given to me for 20 years. Here are the four issues that I wish to discuss that tie into the major issue. My major issue is affordability and affordable housing with respect to developing new tax revenues for our village. First, number one, raising property taxes. This is the path of least resistance and does not make the community affordable, although it does give us a revenue stream. Utilities, number two, electric, water, and sewer. Our capital improvement funds were neglected, and they haven't been funded for many years. We kicked the can down the road for those years, and now we're all paying the higher utilities in hopes of fully funding that fund, those funds. By doing this, we can now pay for improvements, but this does not leave us in an affordable position in the village at this moment. Three, infrastructure. Our infrastructure's in need of repairs and updates. And even as we talk about infilling in the proposed 54-unit complex, our infrastructure needs to be addressed, or you're only going to put more stress on it. This was demonstrated last week by the ice storm. For example, the south side, they lost power again and continually have electrical outages. Furthermore, the south side does have some problems regarding sewer and water runoff from heavy rains, causing sewers to back up in some homes. It's hard to imagine building houses and complexes before addressing our current infrastructure needs first. Four, business. We have to have more of a blend of business and residential in our village. This is why Cresco is such a great first step to developing new tax revenue dollars for us. Cresco is going to generate approximately $125,000 per year for the schools in the village. That's almost three times the amount that's going to be coming out of the proposed 54-unit complex. And furthermore, Cresco is going to generate another $21,000 to $33,000 in payroll taxes, as stated from reports from our former, our finance director. As of major importance, that's a major importance that we look at, is living here and working here. This increases our village payroll tax dollars. If you live here, but you work outside the village, we never see those payroll tax dollars. My point being, out of all this, is this is just one new business that's here. These are significant, real tax dollars. If we can expand business on the CBE or elsewhere, we could have a positive revenue stream. We wouldn't have to run tight deficit spending budgets that we're talking about tonight. These monies would undoubtedly aid affordability for all of us, and along with helping affordable housing, and also give the village a bit more freedom to spend monies of their choice, which you guys were talking about earlier. It takes margin to have a mission. Again, it's a matter of blending business and residential as opposed to being one-dimensional. You can't get to affordability and affordable housing without meeting these four critical steps in order to have more monies available. Perfect. I can see my time's up. I am a viable and qualified candidate. I want this position, but I will say one last thing. When it comes to budget, when it comes to everything that you mentioned about bringing somebody up to speed, Marianne, you brought it up, Jerry Sibbs is probably the best person that's going to fill that need right now and hit the ground running. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dino.
Oh, that's me.
Yep.
Sorry, sorry to keep you waiting. It's crumpled really good, and we have Keneta Sanford.
I have been engaged in government workings from a young age, but I have been especially inspired the last few years. This last election cycle has been even more inspiring, as our Congress has more women than ever, especially young women of color. This is a historical time, leading more people of all walks of life to serve their communities, and I'm one of those people. I truly believe in and value serving in the community, which is why I chose to live and serve here in Yellow Springs. I also chose Yellow Springs because of its ongoing legacy and commitment to issues of social justice. Through my studies and working experience through service, I have learned about the tenets of social justice and the steps society should take in order to make our communities fair and equitable for all. Affordability, especially in facets like housing and other necessities, is an issue of social justice. Affordability and the lack thereof is due largely to systems of injustice that are perpetuated by biases, especially in regards to the implicit biases we all carry. The goals of the village council regarding affordability and justice are wholly intertwined. And viewing them through that lens gives us a better understanding of our next steps and strategizing the ways in which we work toward achieving those goals. I want to be able to empower underserved and underrepresented groups in our community and to ensure that everyone has a seat at the table. I want to be an access point for people who currently do not have interest to this process. Many view people who do not take part in this process as lazy, indifferent, or apathetic, but too often, people are discouraged by their inability to connect because of barriers that are often unknown to people who do not have that experience. I've been engaged, I've been an engaged citizen from a young age, volunteering in 2008 to call people to go out and vote, before I was even old enough to vote myself. While this has always been a value of mine, I understand why people, especially young people, feel like their involvement and their votes don't matter. I believe we have the ability to change that course for our young people here, and I have the ability to make that connection as someone who's worked in that process in the classroom with young adults. This is an invaluable piece of democracy that must, that we must prioritize at all levels of government, starting locally. I believe that we, as a village, have a unique edge to be able to empower our community members and make their voices heard on a local level that does not often happen at the state or federal level. We must start here to give our people the tools they need to empower themselves and others. I want to be a conduit for this important work, and I hope you consider me for the seat. Thank you.
Thanks, Keneta.
Next up, Leo Brandon.
I don't think I've been this nervous to speak publicly since sixth grade, but there's that. Can I start?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, cool. So, besides my receding hairline, I know I look youthful, but I'm not going to let my, oh, sorry, let you laugh. But I'm not going to let my age define my experience. In my five short years of being in the village, I have worked for seven different companies, some under the same brand, so Antioch, The Wellness Center, The Glen, Young's Jersey Dairy, Mills Park Hotel, Erdel Publishing, and your own, Public Access. Through my experience, I have met many mentors. And through those mentors I have met, I have heard about both good and bad ways of doing business in this town. I'm going to tell you two stories. The first story comes from a company that I've had connections with, and it's a story all too familiar to this village. This company is actually moving down the street to Xenia in the coming months. And with that being said, this, this is a story that has been said for over probably 20 years. Since I filmed community councils, it was still said that, that, oh, sorry, that jobs were leaving this town. It's really important for us to have a live, play, and work community. With that being said, I'm going to move to my second story. While certain industries are leaving this town, there are certain industries that are booming, the tourist industry. I work at the Mills Park Hotel as the event coordinator there, and we see hundreds of people come for weddings of all types. There is a good part of that. They invest money in the main street area and in the main businesses. They keep our tourist industry alive. However the downside is, they just invest in the main streets. I talked to an independent business owner that said it was hard to run his business because he's so far out of the loop, and the infrastructure is just not there for people to reach him off one of the other streets. Along with that was my time, was, sorry, along with that is building affordable housing. While there's a lot of work in this town right now, it's mostly restaurant work. We need to be able to live here if we work in the restaurant industry. I myself have lived in the restaurant, I have worked in the restaurant industry, and I lived in this town, and it was hard to find good housing. That is a problem. We want to attract young families that are working outside of this town as well, because otherwise, we're just not going to see the tax revenue that we need to have a budget. Another thing that I wanted to bring up is that when I worked in the White House in DC as an intern, there was a mission to reach all constituents. No constituent had a bad idea, no constituent had a bad, had a bad say. It was all about making sure no one that was disenfranchised felt it, and making sure that they were into the system, making sure that the president got those responses out to those people. And at a local level, we need to do that too, so put a constituent that isn't at the table at the table. Thank you.
Thanks, Leo. All right. And I believe Andrea.
You want to draw my name?
Very far.
So I had like a 72 slide.
Could you?
I'm almost tall enough to do this job. I had a.
I'm right there with you.
I don't know, like, probably an hour-long speech. I had to try to, like, you know, cut it down to a small piece of paper. But my name is Andrea Carr, and I know that everyone has read my letter and read Diane's story about us in the newspaper. And I'm going to try not to be exceptionally redundant here. But I've been a resident of Yellow Springs since 1989. I moved here this summer before fourth grade. Most recently, my family and I moved back to the village in February of 2017. My husband and I are both graduates from Yellow Springs High School. Our parents live in this community. Our children attend school at Mills Lawn, there's three of them. And my husband's a teacher in the district as well. We work out at the Wellness Center. We support local business. And, you know, simply put, we and I are just deeply invested in Yellow Springs. While I have personal goals for the village council, I believe that the priorities of the council at this time are affordability, as well as affordable housing, and those two are not mutually exclusive, policing concerns, and the search for the next village manager. And ironically, I could have given this speech at the beginning of the meeting and just gone ahead and laid out the agenda. I've seen Yellow Springs through many different lenses. I was a child growing up here, a young adult struggling to afford to live here, and now a parent to three children in this community. I believe this gives me a unique perspective and voice on the council. Affordability, housing needs, and drawing and retaining families and young people, as well as business and industry, are priorities to keep Yellow Springs sustainable for the long term. While affordability is not a new issue in the village, I believe we have better tools and options available to us now. The results of the housing needs assessment highlight the extraordinary housing shortage in this village, especially with respect to affordable rental homes. It's my hope for future plans that housing includes dedicated units for our civil servants. The disconnect currently between the police department and the needs of villagers is a concern that simply cannot be ignored. This has been a hot topic for a while, but recently specifically, with a lot of discussion within the community. I've heard constituents' voice of desire for a residency requirement for our peace officers, and I'm interested in what this looks like. Is it an incentive-stipend pay increase that allows our officers to afford to live within our village or available housing? Weapon restrictions for new officers, and a recommitment to a community policing that focuses on the unique needs of the village and the desires of our residents. The justice system task force is a great start, but an outside assessment, as well as the citizen review board, are the logical next steps for improving this relationship. As a nurse midwife in the state of Ohio, I'm going to take Dan Reyes's time. I am required to work collaboratively with physicians and have a full and clear understanding of my role and the limitations that are defined by law. I use communication, professionalism, time management, evaluation, and evidence, and in the moment, critical decision-making to ensure the best outcomes. I believe the most important aspect of my profession is being an advocate for women and families that I serve. And although I have no experience in local government, my profession has prepared me with a skill set that will serve me well in village council. There are so many qualified candidates, and I was really excited to see that when the first email came out. Regardless of our differences and what we view as the priorities of this council, I believe in my heart that we all want what's very best for Yellow Springs. I was drawn to this process by a belief that Yellow Springs needs progressive, interactive, passionate, enthusiastic, forward thinkers, representatives of young families, to represent the citizens of the village. I'm hopeful for the opportunity to serve this community, the one I've lived in and loved for many years.
Thanks, Andrea. All right, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Wow, yeah. Wow, yeah. Okay, so we have a couple of new business items, and then we'll move through the rest of the agenda. Affordable housing, we've already talked about. Mary Ann, I think you're up next with the welcoming community resolution.
Yes. At our last council meeting, Pat Dewise came with the request that we strengthen the resolution that we had passed a year ago, I think. And since then, Patty Bates has done some research and created a draft which is in our packet. There, there are two points that I was concerned about. One involved how we title this. Should we title it Sanctuary Village or leave it as it is? That was one concern. Second, which is something that is still, I think, needs a bit more research, is the issues of, that are within the, this current document, say, things like law-abiding citizen, doesn't have a warrant for arrest. I know that when I went to a workshop presented a couple of weeks ago, that the Quakers presented it, and the pastor from Columbus was there, he said that most undocumented immigrants get caught on a traffic violation. So, I think, I, I would, first of all, we're not voting on this tonight. This is just a, just a sample resolution. My sense at this point is one that we not call it a sanctuary village resolution. I've talked with, or I've gotten feedback from people who are working in this field in Washington DC who said that is a good idea. I also, I'll just say, talked with Kevin McGruder at Antioch about the process Antioch used to decide about calling Antioch a sanctuary college. And from the conversation I had with Kevin, I would concur with something that Judy Kintner actually brought up. I guess maybe it, I don't know.
Agenda planning.
Agenda planning, I think. That calling, Yellow Springs is very small. If we were to call ourselves a sanctuary village, that could in fact raise a flag, not only for the college, which has that concern, but for people in the village who might be being sheltered here or, or living here. So, it's my sense that we not use that term. I mean, I think that anyone who's here will know what we stand for, but I do think that I'd like to do a little more investigating in terms of the language, if there are some ways we want to shift some of the language in here, to acknowledge that, yeah, if someone has a serious felony charge, then there's more likelihood of not sheltering that person. But if someone like has a traffic violation or something, we wouldn't necessarily want our police officers to like give them up because of that.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't be asking the question. I think the whole point of, what I intended for, for the resolution was to, to show that we would not be asking that question. And so, the only, if, if the warrant came up because it were entered into the system, it would have to be relatively serious to begin with. So, if someone got stopped for a traffic violation, they would not be asked immigration status, nor would they be, you know, anything unusual done, just, you know, if, if the warrant's entered in the system, when you run their driver's license and it comes up, that's one thing, but it would not be a conscious search for that information.
But isn't, if, if immigration, if you're, you know, an undocumented immigrant, isn't the main problem is that you do not have a license, a driver's license?
I'm going to say that I don't think that's necessarily the case and leave it at that.
I, I would just like to spend a little more time.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think looking at that question.
Agree. Come back to council.
Okay, so one, and one thought I had was in section one, it occurred to me that maybe we should be also adding political beliefs or affiliations.
Where it says, "Being targeted on the basis of religion, nationality." Really, they're, I think maybe we should say citizenship. I mean, that's what they're being targeted, citizenship or lack thereof.
Okay.
That's what they're being targeted on.
And then, Chris, when this is revised, I'm going to want to hear from you about what our exposure potentially would be, but we don't have to talk about that today.
And I could send whatever I end up submitting to council, send it to Chris beforehand.
Patty and I have talked about this, and we're in a good place to continue the conversation.
Excellent. Okay, good. And I just want to get, again, reiterate that I'm really happy that it's coming back. I think stronger language is appropriate, and I think the village should take a stand on this, so. Anything else?
No, I, I don't have any.
Okay. Okay, so the two items I added just real quickly, one of them is about evaluations. So Kevin, I just want to ask you, are you willing to work with me to kind of update our evaluations and kind of talk about that process and get it ready for the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll come back with that. And then, related to the revolving loan fund, we have had some recent inquiries about microloans, and I wanted to see if council had the appetite to be the reviewing body for, you know, the village value piece of this, so that we don't have to wait until the designated community improvement corporation is up and running. One thing I thought about it is, it might not be a bad idea for us to see the process in action, just so we understand it. So, if we are willing, and assuming that the credit union is still, still willing to do the financial piece, would council be open to kind of putting out there that we would entertain some revolving loan fund applicants? Okay, awesome. All right, that's what I had. Managers report.
Just a couple of things I would add.
I'm sorry, I'm having a tape delay there, so that, the only thing that I'm concerned about is that I, I'm very passionate about the revolving loan fund helping to seed the DCIC.
Yes.
So, I, we have no idea what the pent-up demand is for loans, right? So, we could presumably receive a volume that consumes the entire revolving loan fund just like that. So that takes it out of funding the initial DCIC and that being a conversation point for the convened group. So, I, I don't think we can make this decision right now, but I don't know if we would want to set aside only a portion of our entire funding for the DCIC and also potentially set a cap for the loan request for this purpose, so that we retain that fund.
Right. Well, and I think, you know, we had talked about, you know, looking at loans of like maximum 5,000, or, you know, in that range before, but, yeah.
So I'm just wondering about a percent, I just don't want to consume the entire revolving loan fund necessarily at this point, given the way it's been a focus for the DCIC, so perhaps a percentage of it, or?
Okay, I think that's great. So what would you propose?
What's in the fund?
Actually, Colleen put 40,000 in there, in the current.
How about 10?
10? Sure.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I mean, I, I do want to say, you know, I hate to miss opportunities to do something that would make a difference for the village.
Well, we'll, we'll have the DCIC by January, February, right? We're moving very fast, so I think it's good if we try it, but I just don't want to have, have it just go away like that.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great.
I mean, I don't know what other people think, though.
Cool. Yeah, and I really just want to pilot it.
Okay.
So, that sounds great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I mean, if there's something that comes in that's awesome, I think we could revisit that, but, okay.
Okay, cool.
Thanks.
Managers report.
Just a couple of things. I was asked at the last meeting to address a comment about the, the tasing incident on October 13th and the three discharges that show in the report from the taser company. There are, in fact, three triggers that show. Two of them were contact triggers with the suspect that had no effect on him because he was wearing such bulky clothing, because it was a chilly day. The third one was an arc test because there had been no apparent response. So, the third trigger was an arc test. They show us triggers the same as a contact. This was a, this was a direct contact attempt. The, the probes were removed. It wasn't a typical shoot. It was a contact. Two of them were contacts that had no effect because of the clothing. The third was an arc test. It was not a third contact with the suspect. So I want to be very clear about that.
Thank you.
That's good, but to me, that doesn't address the underlying point, that, I mean, it did no harm in this case, but it still happened, and that it didn't have any effect was just a coincidental thing. So I'm not sure, I mean, I think that's, I appreciate the report, but I'm not sure that that addresses the concerns of the community about the use of the taser, the discharge of the taser.
The, the taser was still used in compliance with the policy, and the policy that was passed by the council, so.
I guess the question is, you know, it's, and I know chief had this report, and I really appreciated it, this kind of scenario-based, you know, kind of looking at scenarios. So, these things were discharged, none of it actually affected the person, and then something happened, which I assume maybe, you know, that, that, you know, whatever the out-of-control behavior that's trying to be controlled, you know, there might be something to learn there, that's for sure, that maybe could preclude next time needing to.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the chief was the first officer on the scene, and he tried as many de-escalation attempts as he could. The suspect was threatening to blow up the building, to harm others, to harm himself, so.
It seems like an opportunity to kind of look at, you know, maybe if there's something that happened afterwards where the person calmed down, or whatever happens, something happened, they stopped trying to tase him, so.
They, they got him handcuffed and put into a cruiser.
And then, since you, Judith mentioned the scenario-based training, I'd like to get a report out on what the scenarios are, and, yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm really excited that this is happening, so, you know, I, I think it would be nice just to kind of follow up on what is happening specifically.
Okay. The other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, we have tasers for, to be used in certain situations, and I am assuming that that was a situation that was appropriate. I mean, I think that there was danger and to residents and staff, I guess, and that person was not complying.
Right. So to me, that's the, that's the focus, not that it just didn't work, because the thickness of the clothing.
But, but that's what I was asked to address at the last meeting, because a citizen had brought up that there were three discharges, and I was asked to address why there were three discharges when the report said two.
I, oh, and the third was the test.
Right.
Thank you.
So, the only other thing that I'm going to bring up specifically is the, the fact that we're going to let the RFP for the farm leases again, because we have to maintain those properties and there's no forward movement on them, we need to get some cover crops on them. I will have, I, did I put the draft in? I did not. I will have a draft in, but I, the draft, the RFP specifically notes that there will be minimal use of pesticides, that organic pesticides will be used whenever possible, that anything that goes on there has to be approved ahead of time, and that council will get a report out at the end of the year on that, so.
And why do we have to say minimal as opposed to no?
Because there are, there will be instances where they have to use something to control problems with the crop, but they, they will be required to use organic pesticides whenever they are available.
I mean, this, we're not requiring people to do an organic farming, and even if we were, you have to have three years in order to be certified to do organic, so that would be, I think, over the top for us.
But do we, is there something we want to do, though, relative to the fact that last farm will eventually, I mean, maybe it's where we're a little far out yet?
It is, because 2019, we'll be getting the test results, 2020, we'll be planting it, that's my assumption.
Yeah.
I can't imagine anything would happen before 2021.
And, and we'll let them for one-year intervals with possible one-year renewals, and all of them will be let to one farmer, because before, we had two, and there was another one that was interested, so we're going to let all of the properties to one.
So in the RFP, could we request their, I guess, plant management plan, so that we can at least see what they're proposing with, you know, pesticides or lack thereof?
And that's all I had in my report.
And I just wanted to raise, since it was also brought up, about the brazos. Are we looking into what some communities do where they just have those automatic, like, you know, I don't know what you call them, but they, if you speed, you get a, you know, something in the mail that says this doesn't put points on your record, but you have to pay a fine for speeding? Have we?
It's been, there's speed cameras.
Right.
They've been challenged.
The issue with that is that the current status of the law, as, as I understand it is, is that if, if that's done, you, you can do it, but you have to have an officer there to witness it. So it, it's become a, it is not a cost-effective measure for many communities.
Because I knew, I know Dayton's doing it, for example, and I just wondered.
I need to look into it again to see how they've evolved it, but when the, the courts ruled, they essentially took away the automated part of it, which is why it was a cost-effective tool, depending on your point of view, for traffic safety or revenue generation.
Yeah.
Right, okay. And I guess I just wanted to bring it up because I'm not thinking about it for revenue generation, but given limited capacity, I mean, that could be a way to control speed errors that come in, you know, through our gateways, particularly Dayton Street, that's been problematic, so we don't have to get into it, but I just wanted to see if we'd ever looked at that. Okay. Chris, anything else?
Not for me.
Okay, Judy?
You've got it in writing?
Thank you. Board and commission reports, anything that council members would like to highlight?
I'd like to go ahead and do Mark Ewalt, nominate him for Energy Board. He's been on before. He's left town for a while, now he's back. Judith and I met with him, we're all on board. I think he'd be a great member to get back to what he's done before, so I would like to nominate him for that position.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I just want to.
I was just going to say that Judy is going to reach out to Mark about when he actually should.
Yeah, I thought he'd already, I thought we'd already, I just want to point out that Energy, Patty had asked me to talk to the Energy Board about their activities, who's going to be reviewing with them, you know, basically asking them that, you know, because staff is so busy, council's so busy, that any things that they do not add work, a workload, and that they be thinking about that whole question of that capacity.
Right.
And so they're going to have a conversation like that.
Good.
I, I have two things I'd like to highlight. The Housing Advisory Board would like to give an end-of-the-year report and goals for next year, and request for council to affirm its, its mission and membership, and we'd like to do that either the first or second meeting in December.
It's on for the second meeting, on the agenda.
Oh, good. Okay, great. And also, Planning Commission has lost Rose Pelzal, who's now working for the village, and that means there are only four Planning Commission members. And Planning Commission is really important at this time, continuing to be important. And I really would like to expedite getting someone. And I really would like to expedite getting someone and anyone who has background on housing, planning, community development, any kind of skill or experience that's related to planning commission, it'd be great to get someone that has that experience.
Right. And I believe we also have a second alternate spot that could be filled as well, so that we don't get in a pinch.
So has that gone out, Judy?
Oh, yeah. It's been out, and you have two candidates. You're waiting for the vote tonight, because one of them is both things.
One of these people who have applied for council.
Okay, got it.
I was going to say, one thing I want to raise on that is there's been this conversation about, you know, commissions not being political bodies, and I think, depends on what you mean by political, I suppose, they're not, they're not elected persons. But I do think we need to be thinking about and sharing when we're talking with people, the goals of the village around, you know, housing and issues to be re-planning. We don't want to be, you know, because those kind of value judgments come into play when you're on planning commission, and it's, we want to have, you know, diverse views, but we don't want to be working against ourselves between planning and village council. And I don't really actually agree that anything's not political. We're watching Supreme Court appointments. You know, yes, they're judicial, but in fact, there's, you know, the way people interpret professionals have different points of view. And so I just wanted, folks who are going to be doing these interviews, to keep that in mind and not be confused by that.
Okay. Thanks, Judith. Lisa?
I have two things quickly. First, economic sustainability commission. We've been working actively to focus on attraction and marketing strategy for the land currently known as the Center for Business and Education. And if you're interested in that, we've been working on a SWOT analysis, so maybe look at, take a look at the packet. I'd welcome your input. It's interesting and important work in terms of economic growth and the tax base. Art and Culture Commission, you may have noticed that the Jungle mural has been in the process of restoration, so please save the date for December 12th at 5:00 p.m., when there'll be a ribbon cutting and some celebration. And the Banner Project, I also want to mention that is being led by one of the teachers at Mills Lawn. I want to say that I kind of misspoke. The focus is on historic women who have been involved with Yellow Springs, not just women in general. So if you have ideas of women from Yellow Springs who have a connection to Yellow Springs to be featured in that banner project, let me know.
And I just want to add about December 12th, that we will be having that ribbon-cutting dedication for the Jungle mural at the Emporium. So we're going to have hot drinks and holiday cookies. And we're also going to be dedicating the Village Inspiration and Design Award to the muralists of Yellow Springs. So the, so the Vito Award will live in what has been described to me as the power strip to get you to Key Sally.
What are the times of those?
Five o'clock.
Where's it going to be?
Right at the Emporium. So if it's nice, we'll be out in the courtyard. If it's not, we'll be inside, listening to some jazz music. And we also are encouraging people to then go to the Chambers Holiday Party at 5:30 at the Brewery and S&amp;G Distillery, so.
And I'm having brain fuzz. I apologize. I realize that I said Mills Lawn for the Banner Project, and it's a high school project, so. Sorry about that. It's high school, not elementary. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Future agenda items, we've already identified a few things here. I want to make sure that we've got the active transportation plan under special reports.
Got it.
Is there anything else?
Report of whatever's going to be finalized position, community description for December 3rd.
Say what?
The.
Village manager search.
Yeah, the posting.
The posting.
And then staff evals, were you bringing those back or is that?
What's, yeah, so we will talk, we'll talk about our process on December 3rd. With the goal to finish that by the end of the year.
And then draft RFP for the farm lease, did you want that back in the welcoming community?
I'd like to get the RFP out, so I thought I could just make the changes, if that's okay.
Yeah, and then, yeah, if I can look at it, that'd be great.
Okay.
And Brian, on the transient housing, you were thinking, last meeting you said you were thinking sometime in January. Were you thinking the first or second meeting?
Why not the first meeting?
Chris?
Transient.
If we're ready for that.
Transient lodging?
Transient lodging.
Discuss a discussion for it.
Right.
We can push out the ESC special report.
Do we want planning commission involved in that? Transient housing. I mean, didn't they have some recommendation a year ago that council didn't abide by, but at least it seems like we should pull it out and see?
Well, I don't think they need to be here. We can certainly bring back that recommendation. It's there. It was in packets.
Yeah, I'll be writing a brief of what's happened in the past and what's been suggested, and Chris is doing a presentation, I think, at the Planning and Zoning Workshop in December, which is why we put it off until.
Right.
And then I've got a question for you folks. On December 10th, planning commission will make a recommendation, because they've got a 30-day window to do so, they will make a recommendation to council regarding the PUD. You can either put on your agenda consideration of that recommendation to be followed by a rezoning ordinance, or you can try to wrangle with both the recommendation and a first reading of a rezoning ordinance in the same meeting, no sooner than December 17th. And that is very, very fast writing of recommendations in minutes. But we are confident that we can likely get that done, so.
So one is, wouldn't you say that again? I don't get the distinction.
So there are two things that happen. You will receive a recommendation from planning commission, which you can either approve, approve with recommendations, or do something different with.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you decide that you want to approve that PUD, whether or not you have any changes or recommendations to it, you have to rezone that property. So that's what triggers kind of all the legal proceedings that follow from that point. So it's probably an extensive discussion, and then you can either have that around a first reading, or you can have that discussion to determine what you want to do with that recommendation, how you want to respond to that recommendation. Within council, it does not go back, it does not go back to planning commission. It's your decision. And then you determine whether you want to bring an ordinance, and then that ordinance has to have two readings.
Well, if we decide to approve with and without conditions the PUD plan, well, of course, we would be rezoning, right? I mean, we'd be rezoning the PUD.
Yeah.
The question is, do you want to go ahead and have the discussion and then read the ordinance? Or do you want to have the discussion and then read the ordinance at the next meeting on the first read?
Having the ordinance with the discussion presumes an outcome. So that is up to you as to whether you want to give the appearance of presuming an outcome, or you're simply being efficient and having it at the table. I mean, I don't, I mean, I think you can look at it either way, but it's for you about how much can you take on in one meeting, and then how you feel about that.
I won't be there. I'll be over there, but.
All right, well, let's figure it out at the next meeting.
It just seems like we should do it together to me. I mean, have them both on the agenda.
Right. And we still have, we're still talking about December 17th, so. Okay, anything else?
And did you hear me say that you can pull out the ESC special report?
Yeah, got that.
17th?
Okay.
Do you want to move it to 17th?
Well, or.
Let's push it into January. Second meeting. Yeah, we have to, we have to convene, you know, a couple more times.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
I move that we move into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the qualifications of the council open seat candidates.
Very good. Okay.
And do we have second?
Second. Okay. Judy, can you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Housh.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Something.
Yes.
Stokes.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Okay, and this is, will be a council-only executive session, so. Okay, so Chris advised us on something first. We will reconvene, and we will be making a nomination and decision after. Yeah, we will definitely, but we will want to turn the key. Do you nominate Canetta Sampson?
Sanford.
Sanford, thank you. Sanford, yes.
Second.
Okay. And should we do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you needed, you need at least three, so Stokes.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yes.
Something.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Housh.
Yes. So I will just say briefly, yes, thank you, everyone, and welcome aboard Canetta. I think one of the things that everybody knows is we took to heart Judith's request that we look for somebody that really represents her constituency, and I think all of you do. Canetta, and I think really highlighted some things that resonated in particular. And the second piece is, you know, I really think the engagement piece that, you know, that was talked about with everybody was another big factor for us, and making sure that we remain a diverse body and that those different perspectives are brought into our decisions. So thanks again. Please talk to us if you need a recommendation for a commission and council.
Yes, I would like to say that I think HRC is going to have an open position like right now. I don't know if it's been broadcast advertised yet, though, right, Judith?
Yeah, I think we already did.
Did we? Okay.
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay. But HRC, I'm looking at all of you. We want you.
Yes, and we know the planning commission has got a full seat and an alternate position.
And I'd just like to say, you know, we, every one of you has strengths that we discussed and are excited about and hope to get you wrangled in one way or another, if you aren't already.
All right.
Ditto.
Very impressive. You guys sort of.
Ditto, ditto, yeah.
Wish we could have taken more than just one.
Yeah. So thanks again, and with that.
I move we adjourn.
And I will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Are we going to do the APB?
Epic council meeting.